When it's time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it's time to listen. Let us always be thankful for all who protect our city, state, and nation, and may we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the honor of serving our beloved city of Boca Raton. Thank you.
Thank you. Will everyone now please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Liddens, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Singer.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Naclis.
Here.
Councilmember Drucker.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thankful to be here.
Councilmember Wichter.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, I understand we have some amendments to the agenda. Could you go over those, please?
Yes, thank you. Consent Agenda Item Number 9F, which is Resolution 612025, will be removed from the consent agenda and heard under regular public hearings as Item 12A. And we would propose to add Resolution 622025 to regular public hearings as Item 12B. The second resolution that I mentioned is to continuing the existence of the city's Community Redevelopment Agency until the year 2043.
Very well. We'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda accordingly. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Wichter, second by Drucker. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we have amended the agenda that way. That concludes amendments to the agenda. So we'll now turn to minutes, and we've got the review of the minutes of the workshop, excuse me, the organizational meeting of March 31st, 2025, the workshop meeting of April 7th, and the regular meeting of April 8th. Are there any corrections or additions? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to approve all three sets of minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second by Drucker. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the minutes are approved. And now, we're very pleased to turn to presentations and proclamations today. And first, we have a proclamation for Water Reuse Week. So I'll invite Kara Mills, our Program Policy Coordinator, to accept the proclamation. And after that, we'll have a proclamation for Water Conservation Month, and then a presentation for our Drop Saver Poster Contest Awards. And I will join Ms. Mills. I will do photos for the proclamations, and I'll do photos individually with the winners, and then we'll invite all the council members to do one big photo with all sets of winners. So I'll join you at the lectern while Ms. Liddens reads the proclamation.
Whereas, safe, clean, and sustainable water resources are essential to Florida's environment, economy, citizens, and visitors; and whereas Florida has established the encouragement and promotion of water reuse as state objectives in Chapters 373 and 403 Florida statutes; and whereas Florida's permitted reuse capacity is more than 1.7 billion gallons per day, approximately 67% of Florida's total permitted capacity for all domestic wastewater treatment facilities; and whereas Water Reuse Florida, the state section of the Water Reuse Association, has proclaimed the week of May 19 through 25, 2025, as Florida Water Reuse Week; and whereas the City of Boca Raton has joined the Water Reuse Florida, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and the South Florida Water Management District in encouraging and promoting water reuse and conservation, now therefore I, Scott Singer, Mayor of the City of Boca Raton, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18 through May 23, 2025, as Water Reuse Week in Boca Raton, and encourage residents and businesses to help save our precious water resources by effectively using reclaimed water. Whereas, water is a basic and essential need of every living creature; and whereas the State of Florida, Water Management Districts, and the City of Boca Raton are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation; and whereas the City of Boca Raton and the State of Florida have designated April, typically a dry month when water demands are most acute, as Water Conservation Month, to educate residents about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources; and whereas the City of Boca Raton has always encouraged and supported water conservation through various educational programs and special events; and whereas every business, industry, school, and resident can make a difference when it comes to conserving water, and by saving water, and thus promote a healthy economy and community. Now therefore I, Scott Singer, Mayor of the City of Boca Raton, Florida, proclaim April 2025 as Water Conservation Month in Boca Raton, and call upon each resident and business to help protect our precious resource by practicing water-saving measures and becoming more aware of the need to save water.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members, esteemed staff and guests. On behalf of Utility Services, I want to express our gratitude to the Mayor and City Council for these proclamations recognizing our vital importance of water conservation, especially today on Earth Day. Our commitment shines through our innovative Sustainable Infrastructure Program, also known as ISIP, and our outreach efforts, where last year we engaged over 14,000 people through our plant tours, special events, and our Drop Savers program. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to pose for a couple photos. We'll stand this way, I guess. Ms. Mills will now introduce all of our winners, and we're very happy for all the participants and want to congratulate the winners. So please, Ms. Mills.
So let's now dive into the Drop Savers program. In partnership with the Florida Section of the American Water Works Association, the City of Boca proudly hosts this annual Drop Savers Poster Contest. This fun contest invites students from all schools, private and public, kindergarten through 5th grade, to create posters promoting water conservation at home. This year, we received over 700 amazing entries. A panel of judges from Utility Services evaluated each entry based on its conservation message, creativity, and originality. I'm excited to introduce the winners from each division. Mayor, please join me in presenting them with their trophies, which they actually have already, because they're very delicate when they keep them in the bag, and asking them to talk about their fantastic posters. Lastly, a huge thank you to the dedicated teachers who inspire these students each and every day. We have Ms. Friedman from St. Joan of Arc, Ms. Mangle from Verdi K through 8th, and Ms. West from AD Henderson. So let's celebrate our future conservation. So our first winner in the grades K through 1st category is Stella Schreiber. She's from St. Joan of Arc in 1st grade. In addition to winning our contest, she actually won 2nd in the statewide competition. So let's give her a round of applause for her.
Would you like to tell everyone about your beautiful poster?
I think it says, "Wash your pet in dry grass so your grass gets watered too." Tell us more about that. All right, leave your posters to yourself. We're just very proud of you, and congratulations on getting 2nd in the state. Do you want to come up? Let's get the family in here, please. We'll take photos for you. Stella, would you like to hold your poster? Very good.
Our next winner, who was in the 2nd and 3rd grade category, was Marcel Malowinski. He's from Verdi K through 8th, and he's in 3rd grade.
Marcel, if you'd like to come on up. You have a lot of great ideas on your poster. Would you like to tell us about them?
So there's four sides. The first one is, turn on washing machine when it's full. The second one is, turn off faucet when you brush your teeth. And third, collect rainwater to water your plants. And fourth, clean your pets outside to water your lawn too.
All great ideas. So well, thank you for sharing those. And can we get Marcel's family up here? We'll take a picture as well. Yeah, please, come on up.
Okay, and last but not least, in the grade 4th through 5th category, our winner was Celeste Derigo from AD Henderson School of FAU. In addition, Celeste also won 3rd in the statewide competition in her division. So congratulations.
Celeste, you have a beautiful poster. I love the coloring here. I want to show, I should show all the council members, all three, but if you'd like to tell us about your poster, please.
I was inspired by my art teacher, because I took some inspiration from her, and I did a good things and bad things side for what you should do and what you shouldn't do.
Yes, and what are some of the things you should do?
You should take short baths and turn off the water when you're brushing your teeth, and you should check your toilet for leaks.
All great advice, so thank you. Congratulations. Would you like to get the family up here? We'll take a group photo. And since we, if you'll hold on, we'll get all the families together and all the winners, and we'll invite the council to come on down, please, if you don't mind. And I'm going to give this back to you, since I don't have one for every council member, so we'll maybe... All right. Kara, would you like the lay of honor? And we'll wait a minute if the families want to go home. Because, yes, if all the council members don't have one, yes, it does. Kids have to get dinner and study and all the rest. But congratulations again, and thank you for participating. And thanks to all the 700-plus students and all the teachers who helped support this contest and spread the most important idea of water conservation, especially on this Earth Day. We have no board appointments today, and we have no responses to workshop information requests. So we'll turn to the consent agenda. Would any council member wish to remove any consent agenda item? And I actually would like to remove Item 9B, as in "boy." So we'll take that up at the end of the consent agenda. Any other removals? All right, seeing none, would any member of the public wish to comment on the consent agenda, unless Item 9B and unless Item 9F? Mr. Ungian.
Jonathan Ungian, 6501 Congress Avenue. So I'm here speaking on Item 9E. And the execution of an agreement with Palm Beach County for the purposes of funding mobility-on-demand service connecting the Boca Raton Tri-Rail Station, that basically the city is going to get money from FDOT, from the county, and give you their own money towards the last mile, which I have to imagine is the transit. I don't know the transit numbers from what I've heard. I've been told, have you seen them? I'm going to tell you, as somebody who's owned an office building that's got 300 people working in it any given day or so, that I've got one person in my building that rides a transit. She goes to the, takes that, has to walk out in our lovely summer days, whether they be 95 degrees or pouring rain, after she's done work, to catch her bus to go to the Tri-Rail. You have the circuit that you've instilled in the downtown. You've got a lot of money going towards this transit bus that hardly anybody uses because it makes people walk out to the street in our lovely climate and wait for it. So if it's mobility-on-demand, which is a service similar to circuit, I've got to imagine, that's on-demand, that's like ordering an Uber, that can have your constituency and the people of this city, whether it be in residential areas around here or in the office buildings trying to get to the Tri-Rail, why not have service that's the best service for them? So why does this city continue to throw good money after bad at this bus that is not good for the environment, for those green people? I see shaking their head up there, like the greenest people here, okay? That care about the environment, that care about all the electric vehicles, which I, by the way, drove in my Tesla here today. So I am a believer in the climate change, you know, and the way that electric can work. But the reality is, why not have electric circuit cars picking people up instead of waiting for a bus that's driving around all day with nobody on it? Seems to be pretty pointless, bad for the environment, and not the best service for the constituency. So I hope that you consider where this funding on 9E will go, because I don't think the city should continue to throw money at this transit program, which these developments around here have to do as well, and can consider a better use, which is expanding circuit to this part of town. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to comment on any consent agenda items? All right, we'll close the time for a public comment on the consent agenda. Mr. Brown, I do believe you have some stats, which I was just about to send to Mr. Ungian, but could you share now, please?
Yeah, just for the record, we're talking about the Northwest Shuttle. In fiscal year 2020, we had 46,599 riders. In '21, 22,973. '22, 38,215. 2023, 53,442 total riders. In fiscal year 2024, 85,371 riders. And this year thus far, 45,087 riders. So the shuttle is actually being used quite significantly. This proposal, the Resolution 602025, is a last-mile service that supplements that service.
Great, thank you. All right, thank you. Any discussion among council members? If not, we'll entertain a motion to, we could have discussion after a motion to approve the consent agenda without Items 9B and 9F.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Then Ms. Liddens, please call the roll.
Drucker?
Yes.
Naclis?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wichter?
Yes.
Singer?
Yes.
Motion passes, five votes to zero.
Thank you. We'll now take up Item 9B. Could you please read the title?
Resolution Number 572025. A resolution of the City of Boca Raton authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an economic development grant agreement with Hispanic Entrepreneur Initiative, providing for severability, providing for appeal, or providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll ask Mr. Lucasik to basically review the resolution and answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Lucasik?
Okay. So this is a action to support the Hispanic Entrepreneur Initiative. It's the first time that we've provided economic development funding to the group. In the past two years, well, excuse me, past three years, we've provided nonprofit funding to them in the amount of $2,000. This year, we're proposing to provide them with some funding to the amount of $8,000, including the nonprofit, or, excuse me, in addition to the nonprofit, and then $10,000 for the two subsequent years. The purpose of this funding is to incorporate yet another business development group into our ecosystem. So as you know, we have a couple of partners that we work with. The HEI has been a part of that orbit, so to speak, but they're now starting to grow their programs and are looking for some funding to help expand and improve their service delivery. So this is an opportunity, a three-year opportunity to see how they function going forward, kind of test what they do after the three years, take a look at how they performed, and make a determination as to whether or not we want to continue to fund this particular group. So that's it at a high level. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lucasik. You and I discussed this on Friday. What key performance indicators or other metrics do we have going into the program to where we're expecting it to be a success? Put another way, what are we asking of them now to show? What are our theses on the number of jobs created or other metrics?
Okay. Don't have targeted metrics for them. So what we're asking them to provide as part of each module that they have is a survey result. So it'll not only be survey results on the quality of the program itself, but also follow-up information about the businesses, what they've accomplished, how they've used the skills and the resources that they've gained from the program, just so we have an understanding of how it's functioning, and are we seeing any benefit from those folks who have actually participated. Haven't targeted any job numbers, haven't targeted any income, revenue numbers, or anything of that nature. This is really just the first shot at taking a look at what they can do and having an understanding of what kind of impact they have.
And that was really my question. I, the reason I wanted to pull this, I have concerns with the lack of indicators going in. This is a phenomenal group. I've been proud to work with them, proud to present proclamations with them, proud to support their nonprofit funding. But if we're going to do this, and I think this and just other economic development efforts going in, I think we need better milestones and KPIs to know what we're shooting for at the outset. They might not be hit, but at least we know what we're shooting for. So for those reasons, I'm reluctant to support this today. If we do so, it's all fine, but I would ask staff in the future, if we're going to be proposing things for economic development, that we should have those metrics at the outset. Ms. Drucker.
So, I mean, I have no issues in having metrics for measurements, but I guess the question is, it poses a bigger question with other grants that we provide for, like FAU Research Park, do we have metrics in place for those grants that we award? We have a lot of other business partners that we're trying to economically have them as drivers. Do they report back to the council? Because we sit here every year, and we approve actually much larger amounts of money, in the hundreds of thousands. So also, Festival of the Arts, I know they have metrics as they come and they present, and they give us information on how they did and how they didn't. So do we do that with all the other participants that we provide grants to?
So similar to this particular scenario, we ask them for data and for feedback. So it's not necessarily designed like this, but we haven't developed KPIs for them to respond to or target. They'll give us their performance over the course of the year, and then we have an understanding of how they've been performing. Then at the end of three years, and generally our contracts are three years, we'll reevaluate to determine how we're going to move forward with them.
So, again, I don't have, I believe that we should have metrics where we're tracking things like that, but I also do not want to discount the work that HEY has been doing. Obviously, as the only Hispanic on this council, I'm very supportive of their efforts. I have participated in a lot of their events, and I have seen the growth of what they're doing in our community and throughout other parts of the community, not only here in Boca Raton, with helping the Hispanic community and the small business community. So with not knowing what impact this would have to them and how they accounted for this, I am more inclined to support the effort, and hopefully they could come back in a year or even six months, and we could take a pulse as to what they're doing. I guess moving forward, the message is that if we're going to help people, we should have metrics ahead of time. It's very hard to sit here and say, "We're not going to prove this money. I'm not sure what they've budgeted for their year." I know what kind of programming they do, because as I said, I participate in a lot of their programming, just like you, Mayor Singer, but maybe economic development has to do a better job of putting metrics before we award monies. In the grand scheme of things, it's not like other grants that we supply that are 300,000, 400,000, is a much smaller grant. So without knowing how they're going to use this grant, I will absolutely support this, but I would like to see some metrics in the very near future. Thank you.
Ms. Naclis?
Thank you. I just had a question, Mr. Lucasik. Was there, was there information that you asked HEY to provide that they did not provide? Or any performance measures that you asked them to help out with that was not provided by them? Anything at all that was asked of them that they did not?
No. This really was, again, this really was the opportunity just to develop a mechanism so we can gather some data, so we can evaluate what the performance was over the course of the three years. But I hear loud and clear that there's some interest in metrics, so we'll start thinking about that as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Wichter?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, you might have to refresh my recollection. Does the agreement state what they're going to use the money for?
Yes. They have an entrepreneur roundtable that they conduct. So that's essentially 10 sessions, and they have a diverse menu of resources and services that they provide to the small businesses and entrepreneurs.
And it's a three-year agreement. Is there a right to terminate after the first year or at any time if the parties aren't happy?
I believe that we do have that language, but let me confirm.
Yes. Okay.
Did you find it? Thank you.
No, I think, okay, I think as Ms. Drucker said, it's a small amount of money. If there's 10 sessions of economic roundtable, and this could lead to some economic development, if it leads to one event, or obviously it could pay for itself quite quickly, or one job. So I'm inclined to support it.
All right. Any further discussion on the dais? Well, but of the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak? Last call. We'll close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 572025.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you for hearing our concerns, Mr. Lucasik. Ms. Liddens?
Wichter?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Singer?
No.
Naclis?
Yes.
Drucker?
Yes.
Motion passes, four votes to one.
Very well. We'll now take up Resolution 9, oh no, excuse me, we will not. 9F has been moved off this item to Item 12A, so that concludes the consent agenda, because 9F will be heard at 12A. We'll now turn to Resolutions and Other Business, and the first item is our Government Campus Partnership Opportunity. First turn to staff. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. We provided an update yesterday afternoon on recent activities and occurrences. Nothing much has occurred since yesterday, other than a regular weekly meeting with CBRE. I don't have anything additional to report this evening.
All right, thank you. Councilmembers, any comments? Actually, one. And I'm going to put it out there, I only got data right beforehand. On the open house we're planning for this coming week, I believe it's been set up now for a maximum of 100 people with a tabletop exercise. Is that right?
That's correct.
All right. I had the chance to speak with, I understand we've already received nearly 100 respondents, residents respond already, and I've also had a chance to talk with our partners, Terra Frisbee. I'm going to suggest something else that would open it up to more people. Rather than the tabletop of 10 separate tables, trying to draw something out from scratch, perhaps, we have Terra Frisbee do an enhanced version of what they did the first time. Now that the plans have been heard, they go out, they present, they have Q and A, and they have opportunities for people to, you know, mark up the boards in that style of charrette. I think it would serve two purposes. One, it'll get more people than the 100, which is a small limitation. And two, I think it will actually yield a better result for two reasons. One, we'll be able to talk about the plans that have been refined in response to public input, in response to our direction, in response to painstaking efforts, and not necessarily start from scratch with new ideas. And second, I think it will also focus the conversation more. The last time we did this, the CAP had just 100 people coming in, and you had a large number of people talking about a skate park, which we already decided, we're already trying to relocate to North Park. And they also said they did not want to see affordable housing, which is something the council's already given direction on. So I think if we're able to take away maybe, you know, not have us limited to 10 tables, open it up to more people, I think we'll get a better result and more resident participation. Ms. Drucker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Singer. Yes, when this was proposed to us a few weeks ago, I brought up that, I said that it was going to be too little, like we were going to have 100 people, and we were going to have several charrettes. And I believe, Mr. Lucasik, at that point, if you can remind me, you said we were going to have multiples, because I've already received feedback that people can't get in. So how do we get into the day?
perhaps, we have Tara Frisbee do an enhanced version of what they did the first time. Now that the plans have been heard, they go out, they present, they have Q and A, and they have opportunities for people to, you know, mark up the boards in that style of charrette. I think it would serve two purposes. One, it'll get more people than the 100, which is a small limitation. And two, I think it will actually yield a better result for two reasons. One, we'll be able to talk about the plans that have been refined in response to public input, in response to our direction, in response to painstaking efforts, and not necessarily start from scratch with new ideas. And second, I think it will also focus the conversation more. The last time we did this, the CAP had just 100 people coming in and you had a large number of people talking about a skate park, which we already decided, we're already trying to relocate to North Park. And they also said they did not want to see affordable housing, which is something the council's already given direction on. So I think if we're able to take away maybe the, you know, not, not have us limited to 10 tables, open it up to more people, I think we'll get a better result and more resident participation. Ms. Drucker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Singer. Yes, when this was proposed to us a few weeks ago, I brought up the, I said that it was going to be too little, like we were going to have 100 people and we were going to have several charrettes. And I believe, Mr. Lukasik, at that point, if you can remind me, we, you said we were going to have multiples, because I've already received feedback that people can't get in. So how do we get into the, to the day? And then I, I didn't know if it was going to be televised. There was like all these questions that 100 is too small of a pool for 100,000 residents. It's 1%, less than 1%. So I had that same concern a few weeks ago and they said, well, we're going to put this charrette and then we're going to have more charrettes to come in different parts of the city. So I'm not sure why, why just that amount. I would agree with you. I think that we need to make it open. And then I didn't understand, like, why are we focusing on just topics for the 10 people when we've already seen the conceptual plan and we've already opened this a few weeks ago when we had the other session? So yeah, I was a little confused a couple of weeks ago and I'm still, I still am.
Further comments? Ms. Knackless.
The, the, and I'm, I'm on the same page generally with you, but one of the comments that I heard from feedback after the last, the last event was a lot of people expected some kind of a presentation, even if it's a short one where they're addressing everyone and then can break out into the different areas or whatever. But everybody kept asking, is there going to be a presentation? Is there going to be a presentation? And no, there wasn't. It was just kind of a lot of information. People were trying to get to all the different areas. So I think maybe if they did some kind of a seven to 10-minute presentation and then they broke out into the different areas, but I agree, 100 people's too little. Like even my family was trying to sign on last night to, to get their spot too, but I don't know whether they got chosen or not, so.
And I neglected to mention, I said I'd spoken with Tara and Frisbee. I spoke with Frisbee today and my understanding is that they were, they're ready to give a presentation up to 30 minutes and then have a Q and A. So I think that might accommodate that concern and hopefully gives plenty of time for the feedback. But I think setting the stage first, rather than breaking off into small mini tables when people haven't seen the new plans that have been revised in response to resident feedback, is not as productive as what I'm suggesting. So I wanted to see if we're all on board with that and then we can tailor this and hopefully open it up to more of our residents. Further thoughts? Does that sound like a plan? Oh, Mr. Wiger, please.
Yeah, no, I agree. I mean, obviously the studio, I think, has 290 seats, or 287, something like that, so why not fill it up? Absolutely. Let them do a presentation on how the project has changed, how they're responding to public feedback, absolutely. And then there could be breakout sessions where people have specific concerns about specific items, you know, or specific locations within the plan. I think, I think it's a better idea.
All right. So I think that we're on board with that. Ms. Drucker, please.
Mayor Singer, so are we still going on with Monday, just the people that got in and now where, where is the conclusion? I'm still, are you saying, we're still having the 100 on?
Oh.
Now it's open for more people?
I, I don't know what we've done. I don't, have we, I don't know if we told any, I, I don't know if we've told anyone yet whether they're in or not, but I just knew that we're, if we're already getting close or at that limit, I thought, let's open it up to more now, so that way we can accommodate more people at the end.
So we haven't let those who have registered know that they're in or not? So if we want to make a pivot, we can certainly do that.
I mean, even, sorry.
Please.
Thanks. Even 287 people, if we wanted to really have like input, you should put it on the amphitheater and put a TV and put the 30 minutes and have everybody come and watch and then they could provide their feedback, however we do that. So I still think 287 people is very little compared to the amount of people. I mean, why not make it like an event where like, like if, if everybody has said, we haven't heard about this project, we hear that every day, we haven't heard about it, we haven't seen it, we haven't talked about it. Maybe we go ahead with the session on Monday, but maybe we do something even bolder, which is open it up on the amphitheater. This is a presentation. This is, this is what we're doing in Government Center and not for feedback, but here we are. This is what we're doing with our downtown. I mean, that would capture a lot more people and then it would also, you know, communicate that we have done as much as we can to put the word out there.
If I may make a suggestion in response to your good suggestion, Ms. Drucker, if we open it up to, I don't, we've already advertised it for the location, so I think that we should do that. You had mentioned that we were planning on doing others. I'd say, let's see, if we open it up beyond the 100, let's see where we go. We may not get 287, you know, like we often, having done a lot of town halls and even State of the City, we sometimes overestimate the number of people who come and we sometimes underestimate. Let's see what happens this Monday and then we can pivot. But I appreciate staff's willingness to pivot and get more people in there and focus on the plans that are there, because they've been, they, people should see the feedback that they've already provided.
Do we know how many people pre-registered?
We're at about 100 already.
100 people have pre-registered?
Yes.
But there's no waitlist per se?
Well, not now. We'll, we'll organize ourselves, make sure that we can open it up to other people. I, I hear you and I understand what you're looking for, so we'll, we'll change.
All right, thank you.
My follow-up is, are we going to be able to re-advertise to make sure that people get in and also give opportunity to new people to participate?
Yes.
Because, correct? Yes.
Yes, we will do that.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, I don't think, we haven't closed the website yet, have we? So it's still, it's, I think it's still open.
Should still be open, yeah.
Still status quo. So good.
We can pivot, we'll, we'll make that work.
Good. Nimble is good. All right. We'll open up the Florida Public Comment. Anyone wishing to comment on the downtown partnership opportunity? If you do, please rise, Ms. Morrow, and come to the dais. I got your card, but I thought that might be under public comment, but now, no, now's a fine time. You can do it now.
Hello, my name is Judy Morrow, 1305 Northeast Fifth Avenue. And today, when I went to City Hall, I saw the Coastal Star and the Coastal Star has a beautiful article about the government redevelopment plan and about the tennis, and it even mentions my petitions. So I, it says in the article, I have 250 petitions. I actually turned in last month 404 petitions of people that care about tennis and want tennis downtown. It's a beautiful article and it's very, very interesting with a lot of facts and detail from Mary, the lady that comes here all the time. Okay. And then the second thing, my main and most important thing today is that when it comes to Patch Reef, the CSR company is giving the city bids for hard courts and for clay courts to resurface the courts that are there. Please, for our temporary courts, please resurface Patch Reef with clay courts. So your vote is going to determine whether that happens. And I, tennis players would greatly appreciate it and there's a lot of tennis players. Okay. In the United States, one out of 13 people have played tennis the year that, every year that they do the survey, it's up to one out of 13 have played tennis sometime that year. And so that's very important to know. And if we're going to have more development and more people, we need more tennis courts. Okay. In Del Ray, the Open, the men's Open there, they had 67,000 people attend last year, 2024. I couldn't get the numbers for this year. The Miami Open had 400,000 people attend to watch tennis. Tennis is super, super popular and growing a lot. In the city of Boca, we have 17% of the children are under 18 and we should increase some kind of city program like Inky Fisher, who started Boca Raton Tennis Center, used to have 100 people come on Saturday. And she was very good at keeping them all busy and providing a very good service of teaching tennis and making it better at a low cost. And in Boca, we also have 25% of the population is over 65 and I'm in that population of the 25%. One out of four people, you know, are over 65.
Could you please conclude?
What?
Could you please conclude?
Okay. And to conclude, in Orlando, Florida, and I've taken the bright line with my grandson to Orlando, they have 98 tennis courts in one place. It's called the USTA Nationals and tennis is very, very popular. And a couple of people, Mark plays, Fran, she's the Iron Woman, we want her to start playing.
Thank you. Ms. Morrow, I actually just have a question, before you go, I have a question for staff. Ms. Morrow said she turned in petitions. Have we received what she's turned in?
Yes.
They were provided to the Recreation Services Director.
Great. Terrific, thank you.
404.
All right, thank you. All right. Anyone else wishing to comment on the downtown campus? Mr. Ungian.
Yeah, but why is it coming on the microphone here?
Jonathan Ungian, 6501 Congress Avenue. So I'm going to get my tidbit out now, because I've got to go home to a six-month-old. But again, units per acre, so not all of this is in the downtown. What is the number of units that are going on this acreage? Would love to know that. It seems like the numbers keep changing. The plan keeps changing, which you guys picked a partner based on a plan, yet the plan seems to be pretty fluid. Just to do the math, last time I checked, 100 people out of 100,000 is not 1%. It's 1/10 of 1%. So tiny, tiny fraction of it. Also, I basically live in this part of town. 85,000 people riding this shuttle. How's that getting compiled? 45,000 already this year. Do I need, you let me know how I can do it. I'll get John, how do we do a traffic study on that number? Because I'm going to call that being completely fabricated and erroneous. And I live it. You can shake your head some more. But because of the shaking of the head, I'm going to come back with a nice presentation, I promise you, the next hearing with a senator on the Senate floor scolding this city for the Live Local Act and the DDRI. The deputy city attorney is well aware of it. A number of the council members have heard. This senator on the House floor discussing how disappointing it is that you have got champions of affordable housing, okay? Champions of affordable housing, yet they do everything possible to make sure that affordable housing doesn't happen in a part of town that does want more units per acre, not just keep saturating the downtown. I hate to use the, the R-word, but it would be interesting to see what the taxpayers like in the form of maybe a, you know, they didn't like Houston's, maybe like a referendum, because we completely oversaturate the downtown. Every time, everybody comes here, they hate the number of units that are going in the downtown. They hate that their view is getting blocked. They hate the traffic on Palmetto. But this part of town just continues to be overlooked, the part that's right next to the Tri-Rail, the part that's right next to 295 locations. You'll leave here, you guys left here last night, and ladies, excuse me, left here at rush hour, at 5 o'clock, 5:30. How was the rush hour? So let's talk about that. Let's make a change and a difference. I hope that I hear a presentation or a discussion. The beep's cool, I'm done.
All right. Thank you. That is a new thing with our timer. I didn't hit it, so can we reset it, please? Thank you. If that's a problem, we'll just have to count from four and I'll stop people at one, so it doesn't go off, but that's, that's new for her. All right. Anyone else wishing to comment on the partnership opportunity? All right, we will conclude that item. We'll now turn to quasi-judicial and related public hearings and we have public hearings on items A1 and A2. They will be combined because the items are interrelated. A separate vote will be taken on each item. The items are both, because the two items are quasi-judicial, the city's quasi-judicial procedures will be applied to the combined discussion and if item A1 is not approved, we will not take up item A2. Ms. Siddons, would you please read the title of Resolution 55 and 56-2025?
Resolution number 55-2025, a resolution of the city of Boca Raton considering for the Boca Raton Christian School and approximately 19.84 acre property generally located at 470 Northwest Fourth Avenue. One, an amended and restated conditional use approval consolidating city council resolution numbers 30977, 1979, 9780, 5293, 8295, and 932008. And two, a conditional use amendment to increase the student enrollment from 800 students to 950 students in the single-family residential, R1D, and multifamily residential, R3 and R4 zoning districts, providing for appeal or providing an effective date. Resolution 56-2025, a resolution of the city of Boca Raton considering for the Boca Raton Christian School and approximately 19.84 acre property generally located at 470 Northwest Fourth Avenue. Five technical deviations from Section 23-190D Code of Ordinances as follows. One, for an existing driveway on Northwest Fourth Avenue to reduce the required driveway reservoir distance from 100 feet to 25 feet. Two, for an existing driveway on Crawford Boulevard to reduce in the required driveway reservoir distance from 100 feet to 15 feet. Eliminate a required four-foot wide median separator and to reduce the required number of Egress lanes from two to one. And three, for an existing driveway on Northwest Seventh Street to reduce the required driveway reservoir distance from 100 feet to 40 feet, providing for appeal or providing an effective date.
Thank you. We'll now ask the city attorney to review the quasi-judicial procedures that will govern today's public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, the quasi-judicial items this evening are governed by the city council's rules, including the rule that states that each applicant requesting approval of relief or other action from the council shall disclose at the commencement or continuance of the public hearing any consideration or payment provided or committed directly or on its behalf for an agreement to support, withhold, objection to the requested relief or action tonight. Copy of the quasi-judicial procedures governing this proceeding is attached to the agenda and a copy can be obtained from the city clerk.
Thank you. At this point, we'll ask council members if they have any ex parte communications they wish to disclose. We'll start on my left with Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. I spoke about this matter with Cameron Free. He's the executive pastor at Boca Raton Community Church. I spoke with Matthew McDaniel, who's the senior pastor at Boca Raton Community Church. I spoke with Bill Mitchell, the former senior pastor. I spoke with Len Visser, the head of school there, and I had brief conversations with Al Travassos and Rick Zimmer regarding the merits of the project. I believe that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Knackless.
No ex parte.
Thank you. Ms. Drucker.
I received a call from New Nugent. I believe he's a pastor at Boca Raton Christian School, maybe not, because he had a question. So I'm not sure, I never was able to connect with him, but just wanted to disclose that, so no other disclosure.
Noted. Thank you. Mr. Wiger.
Yes, Ms. Julie Schiff, the architect for the applicant, was a former customer of mine at the Greenhouse offices and I am a current customer of hers for private services. I had a conversation with the Palm Beach County Commission on Ethics on this issue just to get clarity and because she is no longer my customer, there is no more conflict. And I spoke to her briefly about the project.
All right, thank you. And I have no ex parte communications to disclose. So at this point, we'll ask anyone who wishes to speak on this matter to please rise so the clerk can admit her the oath.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that testimony made before this public hearing will be truthful and accurate? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Jacob Gurman, Planner with the Development Services Department, will make the presentations on Resolution 55-20, 55-2025 and 56-2025.
Thank you.
Agenda numbers 11, A1 and 2.
Thank you, Mr. Gurman.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jacob Gurman, Planner 2 for the city, and I'll be presenting the Boca Raton Christian School located at 470 Northwest Fourth Ave. The applicant is requesting a conditional use amendment to increase the student enrollment from 800 students to 950 students, together with five technical deviations from Section 23-190D Code of Ordinances for driveway design to not modify the existing driveways. This application does not include approval for any new buildings or other structures This application does not include approval for any new buildings or other structures on the property. The Boca Raton Christian School project is located on an approximately nineteen point eight-four one acre property that consists of four distinct parcels. The project is located approximately eleven hundred feet north of East Palmetto Park Road and approximately seven hundred feet west of Northwest Second Ave. The property is owned R-three and R-four multifamily residential and R-one D single-family residential, and has a future land use designation of institutional and residential low. During the review of this application, staff reviewed the school's master plan and Phase One site plan that was approved in two thousand and eight. The master plan included the following condition of approval: where the master plan shall limit the general location, number, and use of all facilities on the property. Site plan approval from the Planning and Zoning Board shall be required for all phases of development on the property, which includes concurrency approval from Palm Beach County and a site-specific traffic study acceptable to city staff. In addition to other applicable permits and approvals, each phase of development shall be required to stand on its own merit pursuant to all requirements of the city code. Staff determined that a majority of the improvements authorized under the Phase One Site Plan were not completed, which included major additions to the recreational athletic center, ministry center, school, driveway sidewalks, et cetera. And therefore determined that the Phase One Site Plan could not stand on its own merit pursuant to all requirements, which included the increase to student enrollment. Staff determined that since the plan was not vested due to the lack of improvements completed, the school had reverted back to the nineteen ninety-four approval, including total student enrollment. Therefore, because the maximum of nine hundred students approved under Phase One Site Plan was not vested, the current maximum number of students is eight hundred pursuant to that approval. The master plan had included a Phase Two, which included an increase of student enrollment up to nine hundred fifty students. However, while a Phase Two Site Plan for the master plan was submitted, the plan was subsequently withdrawn and not approved.
Excuse me, Mr. Gurman. When was that second site plan, the Phase Two, when was that submitted and withdrawn?
It was submitted in two thousand and eleven and withdrawn before public hearing.
Around that time. Thank you.
As I said, there are no physical improvements associated with this application, and no additional parking is required due to the increase in student enrollment. All physical improvements to be completed were included as part of a recently approved minor site plan amendment, SPA twenty-four oh eight A, approved administratively on December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four. The minor site plan amendment that was granted was to install two modular buildings on the property. The applicant indicated that with the addition of the two modular buildings, that student enrollment could increase its capacity to approximately eight ninety-five, an increase of a hundred and seven students from its current capacity of seven eighty-eight. This conditional use would allow the applicant to make future expansions to either add or amend existing facilities without having to amend the conditional use at that time. The applicant has requested five technical deviations from section twenty-three one ninety-D for three driveways located at Northwest Fourth Ave, Crawford Boulevard, and Northwest Seventh Street. None of these driveways are proposed to be modified with this application. However, due to the proposed increase in student enrollment, these driveway entrances do not meet current standards for major driveways. Major driveways are required to have a minimum driveway reservoir distance of a hundred feet, a fourteen-foot ingress lane, a four-foot wide median separator, and two twelve-foot wide egress lanes, and a thirty-foot turning radius located on a collector and/or local roadways. Northwest Fourth Ave is a full-access major driveway during the weekday peak hours of the school and is primarily used as an exit for parents dropping off students in the morning and picking them up in the afternoon. It is limited by using traffic cones and school staff to redirect traffic. This driveway is open for two-way traffic during off-peak hours. This driveway currently does not meet the driveway requirements for driveway reservoir distance, where a hundred feet is required and twenty-five feet is provided. Crawford Boulevard is also a full-access major driveway during the weekday peak hours of the school. It's primarily used as an entrance for parents dropping off students in the morning and picking them up in the afternoon. And there is no, there is no expected to be any operational conflicts between incoming and outgoing vehicles here. This driveway does not meet the requirements for driveway reservoir distance, egress lanes, and median separator. Where a hundred-foot reservoir distance is required, a four-foot median separator and two twelve-foot wide egress lanes. Where only a twenty-five-foot reservoir distance is provided, no median separator is provided, and only one egress lane is provided. Northwest Seventh Street is a full-access major driveway only on Sunday, and it is intermediate driveway during the rest of the week. This driveway does not currently meet the requirements for major driveway where a hundred feet is required and only forty is provided. This driveway does meet all requirements for an intermediate driveway. The image above depicts the school's queuing diagram, which shows plenty of space for spill-over to be contained on-site. The school operates with staggered pickup and drop-off times. Pursuant to city requirements, fifty-two stacking spaces for student pickup and drop-off are required with one thousand forty queuing, feet of queuing length. The applicant has provided a hundred seventeen stacking spaces with two thousand three hundred fifty feet of queuing length, with two separate stacking lanes, and any spill-over can be contained on-site. The applicant states in their traffic study that an appropriate pavement markings, traffic control devices, and staffing are in place during this time for pickup and drop-off. Such a condition of approval has been included in the accompanying conditional use resolution to ensure that these items continue to be in place to ensure student safety during pickup and drop-off times. During the analysis of this application, staff found that the project is consistent and compatible with the city's comprehensive plan. The master plan is not vested due to lack of improvements required as a condition of approval of Phase One Site Plan. The project will increase the student enrollment by a hundred fifty students. The school's pickup and drop-off queues can be contained within the school's property, and the church's highest peak volume only occur once a week on Sunday. The project was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Board on April third, twenty-twenty-five, and was recommended approval in a vote of five to zero. Development Service Department recommends approval of the conditional use amendment and the technical deviations. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, any questions? Actually, one, Mr. Gurman, I'm looking at the file. I see that in two thousand and eight, a number of technical deviations, similar if not identical to the ones that are before us today, were approved. Is that, was it a hundred percent overlap with what's before us now and what was there previously?
So they did not make those improvements. So the driveways were approved in a different manner than they are existing today. So that's why the technical deviations are back.
Okay, but the prior city council had previously authorized technical deviations similar to the ones that are already here, and the site has been, even if not identically, is planned functioning largely with what's proposed now?
Brain the chat Development Services Director, are you, are you asking if they're essentially operating in the same manner now and will be as they were in proposing in two thousand and eight? Or are you asking if the application was identical?
I'm asking if, what, if the technical deviations are granted, are they gonna operate in substantially the same manner as they are today?
Yes. So the student enrollment would increase from eight hundred to nine fifty, the maximum. So that is significant, but not fundamentally different. They'll operate in the same manner. And if there's some kind of operational problem, we will be able to work with them to make sure they adjust their operations. But they're, given the size of the site and the configuration, there's plenty of room to accommodate the necessary pickup and drop-off of students.
Right. And, and part of the reduction in the reservoir lengths that's requested in some of these technical deviations is because those reservoirs are already incorporated in the ingress egress plan of the school as it exists now?
It's because the driveway classifications are changing, and therefore the reservoir distances get bigger. But these requirements don't really fit really well with the school pickup-drop-off situation because even with a longer reservoir distance, there are going to be parking spaces blocked as part of the pickup and drop-off line. That's just a fact of how school pickup and drop-off works. So it, it's not, again, it's not fundamentally different.
So part of these are to allow the applicant to make reasonable use of the property, given its intended purposes?
I agree with that, yes.
All right, thank you. Any further questions? All right, we'll open up the public hearing. We'll first invite the applicant to come forward. You'll have up to twenty minutes if you need it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Bonnie Miskel, fourteen Southeast Fourth Street, Boca Raton, Florida. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. And with me this evening is the Executive Director, Pastor Cameron Free, who will be speaking first, and will be very brief. I'm also joined by Mr. Donaldson, who has done the studies necessary for this application to have gone forward. And our architect is Juliette Schiff. But it, this is a very unique situation. It's rare that you get a school that's been operating for fifty years to come back and ask for an approval, a use approval, to operate as a school. But as Mr. Shad suggested and articulated, just like even Lynn University, there are maximum numbers that are often assigned to master plans. This one, while it was increased in two thousand and eight, it expired, and it is lower than the number that we're asking for today. So that's substantially the, the major difference between why we're here and what we're looking for. We're going from eight hundred to nine hundred and fifty students. But the driveways are the same as what you see today. The ingress and the egress is the same as what you see today. There is some of the longest queuing and, and stacking area of any school in our city. So essentially, we're asking to continue to operate as we are today, but to allow us to go up to the nine hundred and fifty. In any event, I'm gonna turn it over to Pastor Free, who's gonna just go over the background of the, the school a little bit, and he'll do so very quickly.
Pastor?
Good evening, Cameron Free, four seventy Northwest Fourth Avenue. Good evening, council. Great to see you. It is very great to be here, to be able to share this with you. Boca Raton Christian School has been a part of this community for over fifty years. It's a part of Boca Raton Community Church, or Bible Town, as many know it. Boca Raton Community Church, celebrating its seventy-fifth anniversary this year. We love this community. And fifty-two years ago, our church decided to launch this school, Boca Raton Christian School. Boca Raton Christian is a nationally recognized, accredited, Christ-centered college preparatory school, serving students pre-K three through twelfth grade that admit students of any race, color, nationality, or ethnic origin. We have faithfully served these students in our community, and we have a desire to impact even more. You'll see up on the screen, in nineteen seventy-three, Boca Raton Christian School opened. We named our first headmaster. We built our first building on the site that we currently occupy in nineteen seventy-eight, and we've been impacting students ever since. Our goal is to impact them in the following ways: with a biblical perspective, with partnership with parents, academic excellence. We want to focus on the whole child, the whole person, socially, emotionally, intellectually, aesthetically, physically, and above all spiritually. And we want to instill in these students a second mile spirit. As we are working with these students, we understand that Boca Raton is continuing to grow. We believe the demand for strong, values-based, academically excellent education will only increase. With your partnership, we can ensure that more families in this growing city have access to an education that develops both mind and character. We respectfully ask for your support in helping us continue and expand the mission that has benefited this community for generations. I'll now turn it over to Juliette Schiff with Neta Architects.
Juliette Schiff, six-two-one Northwest Fifty-third Street. I want to thank staff for working with us for the past year in support of our project to increase the student enrollment from eight hundred to nine hundred and fifty students and related to the driveway design to not modify the existing driveways. The site is just under twenty acres. On the east side of Northwest Fourth Avenue is the Boca Raton Christian School, and to the west is the Boca Raton Community Church. This is a close-up that shows you that the drive aisles and the vehicular circulation is contained within the two sites. The technical deviations there are related to Crawford Boulevard, which is our ingress for both drop-off and pickup, egress on Northwest Fourth Avenue, and ingress-egress on Northwest Seventh Street. The vehicular entries, this is the main exit to the school during drop-off and pickup. And you can see that there are cones and staff there directing traffic. This functions as an exit only. Crawford Boulevard, we are requesting three technical deviations. This is our ingress for both pickup and drop-off. This is the entrance and exit at the church. This is used for pre-K three through K-five. And the proposed increase in students is not expected to add any new traffic at this driveway. These are the queuing diagrams. If you take a look at the one on the left, that's for drop-off. The one on the right is for pickup. They both follow the same pattern. Whether you look at either the left or the right, on the upper right-hand side of each, you can see that the pattern of ingress from Crawford brings the cars in. There are two lanes that circulate around the school site within the property. Drop-off in the morning has both Zone One and Zone Two, and egress is outside of Northwest Fourth Avenue. We have the same situation in the afternoon. We do have staggered pickup and drop-off times. This is the queuing diagram for the church side, which is K-three through five, K-through K-five. And the K-three parents do have the option to park and walk the students to class. They enter on Northwest Seventh Street, and they egress on Northwest Sixth Street unless they're parking and walking their, their children. I want to introduce John Donaldson now, who is our traffic engineer, who can talk about the queuing distance.
John Donaldson, one-two-seven-seven-three Forest Hill Boulevard, Wellington. As Julia said, we have double stacking on this, which is a, which is a blessing for this kind of site because now you can have two lanes of traffic going in. They're going to two separate drop-off or pickup points, so we can get double stacking, so we can have fifty-two vehicles or a thousand square, thousand linear feet of stacking. We're still not even close to maybe halfway of the stacking that we could provide on-site. So, thank you.
These are the criteria, which I won't go into great detail, but I will talk about. John's done the study to analyze the queuing. And as you can see, we don't even use half of the site, so there are no issues with impeding the public in any way, particularly overflow onto the streets. There are additional criteria for deviations. This, this particular request is unique because it is the same use, it is the same driveways, they are the same buildings. The only change is to go from eight hundred to nine hundred and fifty students, and what that impact would be, which John has studied. Based on the study, it shows you that we have so much area within the site. It is a very unique site in that there is massive queuing areas so that not only will cars stay off the street and be contained within the site, but they won't even impede much of the parking that is on the site. In any event, just as I think you noted, schools are very unique to the extent that we expect queues. We expect, if you're in a pickup line, that you're gonna wait to pick up your child. So in any event, this may be one of the few cases where we are asking for the minimum. We are asking to not change the existing driveway. We're not asking for additional or less queuing area. We are asking to remain the same as what we are today. And in all the years that they have operated, they have never had a complaint about their pickup and drop-off, which is pretty remarkable because everybody complains about pickup and drop-off at every school in Boca Raton. In any event, and lastly, they do have a waiting list to get into the school. The school is such a successful school, and they have such great standards and performance, that students are waiting to get in. So we're hopeful that you will agree with us and approve this this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll open up the public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward. I don't believe anyone else who hasn't spoken already was, rose to be sworn in. So at this point, we'll ask the applicant if you want to sum up.
We're good. Thank you very much.
And Ms. Miskel says they're good. So we will close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion first to adopt Resolution fifty-five, twenty-twenty-five. Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I'll give it to Mr. Wigder, I think, by a hair, but we're ready. Any discussion, council members? All right. Then seeing none, Ms. Sidens, please.
For Resolution fifty-five, twenty-twenty-five. Knackless?
Yes.
Wigder?
Yes.
Drucker?
Yes.
Singer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good. We'll now take up a motion to adopt Resolution fifty-six, twenty-twenty-five relating to the technical deviations. Do you hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I'll just say, I believe that the criteria have been satisfied based on the evidence before us. Any further discussion? Ms. Sidens, please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wait, excuse me. Singer?
Yes.
Wigder?
Yes.
Drucker?
Yes.
Knackless?
Yes.
Motion passes, five votes to zero.
Thank you. That concludes our quasi-judicial matter. We'll now turn to regular public hearings. The first side- The first item is 12A, which was formerly 9F. And Ms. Siddens, would you please read the title of Resolution 612025 relating to the speed-detection camera system?
Resolution number 612025. A resolution of the City of Boca Raton, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Redspeed Florida LLC for speed-detection camera system for school zones, providing for separability, providing for appeal, or providing an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Zach Beer, Public Works and Engineering Director, will make a presentation on Resolution 612025, which is the agreement with Redspeed Florida for speed-detection camera system.
Thank you. Mr. Beer.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Zach Beer, Public Works and Engineering Director. This evening before you, on the, which was pulled from a consent agenda as part of the legislative requirement, is to approve the vendor contract with Redspeed and move forward with the Phase 1 locations that was brought to you previously. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council members, any questions? Ms. Knackless?
Mr. Beer, thank you for getting this done quickly, because we want to get it implemented. Is this considered a pilot going forward, this first phase that we're doing?
Yes, so the initial phase would be considered a pilot.
Okay. And as we move forward, if this is successful, will you be talking to other companies about this, or will still be evaluating what our options are as far as contracts for other, the rest of the schools going forward?
Yes, certainly. I think from the perspective of contract and vendor evaluation, there's obviously revenues exchanged as part of the ongoing process to keep the, as a net zero, to keep the process going. So for this, it'll be dependent upon if the vendor's successful to be able to deploy the early stations. Obviously, there's state and county right-of-way that they're going to have to be working in, and so staff is going to evaluate that operational ability in Phase 1. And then depending upon how that goes, it's likely the city would remain with that vendor. If they're not able to meet the city's needs, and they have been, they're unsuccessful, then of course, the city will evaluate all potential vendors for being able to supply that process for the city.
Further questions? Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Beer. It would seem, and we're all new at the, at the school zone speed-detection process, I think, at least, you know, we up here are. It seems like there are a number of vendors who compete in this space that are qualified and experienced. How did, including the Redspeed firm that is, was identified by staff, how did it come to be that this vendor was selected for the pilot?
Certainly. So with the details of the procurement, staff went through the overall operational constraint and evaluated several different contracts, as well as public, publicly-available information related to the cost structures of the contracts and implementation in Florida. So generally, one of the components was the South Florida Governmental Cooperative, which is an agency that does economies of scale and brings on vendors from multiple municipalities and government entities to be able to do what's called piggybacking, which is a little bit of a lame term, but allows for governments to do intergovernmental solicitations. That allows for pace, which was one of the goals of the direction staff got, was to rapidly deploy the system. And so utilizing the intergovernmental solicitation that was put out by Plantation through the intergovernmental cooperative, that allowed staff to utilize the resources of a procurement process that we're familiar with, and was a portion of the overall matrix that staff evaluated to provide best value. That concludes my questions for the floor.
Thank you. Ms. Drucker.
Thank you, Mayor Singer. Thank you, Mr. Beer. So, obviously, something really, really important for our community, for the safety of our children, public safety, et cetera, et cetera. How many companies did you meet to before we got to this particular company that we selected?
I apologize. Could you ask again, how many companies did staff meet with?
Yeah, did you, multiple. So, this is a big, this is a big pilot, and this is a big undertaking for our public schools and for really the safety of the people on our roads, especially the schools. What I want to make sure is when we enter a pilot, or we enter a partner, like we've done in other times, so I'm going to use Boca Connect. Obviously, that went through a formal RFP. We got a lot of people that came here and presented to this, to this dais, a bunch of different options, and then we turned it over to staff, and then staff made what they felt was the best option. And I want to make sure that when we're entering a pilot of this magnitude, which is affecting about, I think it was like eight or seven schools to start, or maybe it was five, I don't have it in front of me, that we've done our due diligence. We've received communications and emails and articles about this particular company and issues that they've had. So I want us to not have those issues, and I want us to implement the best pilot, so that we're successful in accomplishing our goal. Obviously, for me and for all of us up here, public safety has been the number-one thing, my number-one focus. So I just want to make sure that we're not rushing into any pilot, and that we have done all of our due diligence. And that's, because this came out of pretty fast, so I'm not sure between this meeting and the ones that we had before, I mean, we just saw this, basically. So I want to make sure that whatever we are doing, that it's the best pilot for the safety of our community. And if you tell me this is the way that we want to go, because they proved that they're going to be the best partner, then obviously, I will support this. But I just want to make sure that, as we've done with other partners that we've entertained, that we are completely doing our due diligence.
Yes, sir. Very good question. So to answer that question, I did not meet with any vendors, with the exception of Ultimate, who requested to meet with staff. We did our due diligence through data analysis and evaluating the existing contracts. So for example, Redspeed is a very established vendor in both the state of Florida and Georgia. They have over 90% of the market share in Georgia, and then in the state of Florida have somewheres, based on staff's research, 13 or more municipalities and counties, which are mid-to-large-scale municipalities and local governments, whereas Ultimate has just three, to our understanding. We asked multiple times for contracts from various vendors and evaluated, off the top of my head, somewhere between four and six overall vendors. There were certain vendors that had specific characteristics that staff immediately eliminated. Those vendors had contract termination clauses in them that would have added costs to the city if there were removals of equipment and other immediate elements that were not moved forward. Down to the specific vendors that staff did a detailed look on, it is a paper exercise up until the point where they're, they have to perform in the field. I have heard varying degrees of success. I think it also depends on the staff that's involved in the implementation. We did a deep dive on the Manatee County implementation, and they had the speed-limit signs, variable speed limits. They also did not, I think, communicate to the residents very well what was happening in advance. And so a lot of those things, I think, are lessons learned from an operational perspective. But certainly, the vendor is ultimately responsible for getting the equipment deployed in the right-of-ways, and if they're unable to do that, the city has the opportunity to terminate the contract for convenience. And certainly, if the contractor's not performing to move this process forward, staff would evaluate all contractual remedies. So in short, the early stages had a very deep dive for the analysis to get to this point. If a contractor doesn't, or a vendor doesn't perform, which is always a possibility, staff then utilizes the terms in the contract to be able to take appropriate action.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? I want, there is a breakdown, Mr. Beer, in the cover memo of how the, any fees collected are allocated among the vendor, the city, the state, the county. Is that percentage share the same across all vendors and required by statute?
That is, that, that percentage breakdown is the same. So the different amounts that go to the different entities is the same across all vendors. That is correct statement.
So the thing that may differ among vendors is the fixed fee. Some vendors have a fixed-fee monthly contract, and others have a fee per ticket?
That is correct. There is a, there, those are the two, I would say, two main differentiators out of the main vendors for their fee structures.
And did you analyze, there's a natural breakpoint when you have a fixed fee and an itemized one. Did staff do a breakpoint analysis and then come to terms with the recommendation here, thinking that this would be, for the projection, a better equitable split?
Staff did do that intense analysis, but as far as revenue generation, it was a safety-focused approach, so that wasn't, I would say, the final determining factor.
Of course. And let me make clear to you and to everyone, this is a safety measure, not a revenue generator, but I just wanted to make sure that we were clear. Staff's recommendation, obviously, is focused on the primary safety driver, right?
That is, it is, it is a, it is a safety, the vendor selected is based on the safety analysis, is not a revenue, based on the revenue determination.
Okay. And part of this is that you, we, I mean, the council identified this as a public safety opportunity, and staff responded in kind, right?
That is correct. It was identified as an opportunity, which is very sad, but we can start the messaging right now. Don't say, or, if you're listening, don't speed in a school zone. Don't speed generally, but if you speed in a school zone, it's extra bad. We have children and people trying to get to school. And so in a, in, as staff evaluated the information, and there's been studies done, it's really sad and unfortunate, but people speed through school zones. And so there, in certain instances, as in Manatee County, I think, off the top of my head, I can say, I think there was something like 55,000 violations, which is both tragic and unfortunate. So I think there is a mix of, there are probably going to be some residents in the city of Boca Raton that are disappointed to get a citation, but it is also the law to drive at the appropriate speed through a school zone, to not get a citation. And, and, sorry, to note that staff's intention is to message very clearly to residents and provide variable message signs and many other ways to notify residents prior to the implementation of the school zone ticketing enforcement.
Including a warning period?
That is correct.
And finally, just on that point, tickets will not be given if you're one mile over the speed limit. They'll be given if you're more than 10 miles over the speed limit, right?
That is correct.
All right, so that's quite a difference. All right, further questions? All right, at that, oh, please, Ms. Knackless.
I wanted to make one more point, too, because I was asked if, there was a couple companies that said we didn't know anything about this, but I just looked back at, my first emails were back in October, and so I think you, you were already getting emails and talking to different companies prior to that. Is that correct?
That's correct. And, and earlier, months ago, staff was checking out different contracts and exploring the South Florida Governmental Cooperative contract as an option. So that was out there, and staff received the emails and information as it came in to do that analysis.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further questions? At this point, we'll open the public hearing. I have two cards, one from the Honorable Stephen Abrams, one from the Honorable Ron Klein. So gentlemen, if you'd like to come to the dais, please, or come to the microphone, please.
You're going to hear from all the has-beens tonight.
No, we're hearing from the still-ars and always-will-ies.
So, Mayor, Council, good to see you. Stephen Abrams, LS Ed Partners, 197 South Federal Highway here for Ultimate. And you may recall Jason Norton from Ultimate, who addressed the council, your march meeting, when you were considering the ordinance. The next day, as Mr. Beer indicated, we did have an opportunity to meet with staff, and they were able to explain their justification for favoring Redspeed, which was just described, the main reason being the southeast cooperative, cooperative where Plantation's Redspeed contract is readily available. I'm here to tell you that all the piggyback contracts, there are probably about four or five at this point, are readily available, including the Baker County contract, which was awarded to Ultimate, which, a question was raised whether that was eligible, and it certainly is, and has been confirmed by the city attorney. So I'm not sure that staff was even aware that, of that, and examined that contract. But if the question is, then it's not whether the contracts are available, and certainly the companies are reputable, we'll, you know, attest to that, the question then becomes, well, which contract has the best terms for the city? So of course, I would contend that Ultimate does. Of all the piggyback contracts that are live, where you can actually see the vendor perform, Ultimate is the least expensive, and I agree, Mr. Mayor, that that's not the ultimate issue here, but it certainly is a factor that can be compared as, across the vendors. But in terms of safety, and in terms of getting the program up and running, which I know is such a concern of the council, Ultimate is a company that deploys portable automatic license reader machines. So they can be located anywhere that the city requires and could go up faster. And finally, Ultimate, of course, has, I would say, the best local knowledge. I'm certainly familiar with all of our schools. And in fact, last year, when Ultimate was deciding whether the program would be warranted in Boca Raton, they, at their expense, did some speed studies and asked me, well, which school zones should they go to? And I, of course, immediately, off the top of my head, told them which were the problem school zones, where cars are speeding, and lo and behold, a year later, when the city staff did its own analysis to put together the Phase 1 that you're going to start on, all those schools are included. So clearly, and also, if, if Ultimate were chosen, I'd be working with them on their informational campaign with my familiarity, as well as with the community. So this could actually be turned around pretty quickly. As we know, piggybacks are, by definition, not negotiable. So if the council deemed it appropriate, the, they, staff could confirm what I'm saying, and they could actually, Ultimate could actually sign a contract by the end of the week and could be brought back to you at your next main meeting. So in short, they're the least expensive of the up-and-running programs, they can deploy very quickly, and the contract can be entered into very quickly. So I appreciate your consideration. Thank you, Mayor and Council members.
Mr. Abrams, could you just elaborate on your last point? You were saying it's piggybank, but, a piggyback, but it could be negotiated?
No, no, it, it's not, it's not allowed to be negotiated. Therefore, if you went with a, another vendor, you wouldn't have to go through some kind of negotiation process. The Baker County contract is, that was awarded to Ultimate, is the contract that would be utilized.
I thought that's what your just was, I thought I misheard you for a moment, so thank you for clarifying. Any further questions? All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council members, nice to follow my old friend here. Thank you. My name's Ron Klein, 4620 Northwest 24th Avenue, Boca Raton. I represent Yanoptic Mobile Mobility. They're based in Jupiter. It's a company that is, was the original company that developed this type of equipment. They did the license plate reader, they're the ones who basically deployed all the hardware throughout the country. Most, most equipment is, is their equipment. They went into the operational side, which is obviously what you're talking about a number of years ago, and operated very successfully in that space. They did not have the opportunity, unfortunately, to get with your staff to explain what their program's all about. They're also extremely experienced in this. Their program, as a matter of fact, their business philosophy, and I had a chance to have this conversation with one of the council members, is if they're successful, that means there are less tickets and more safe people around the streets. This is not about more tickets, this is about less tickets. If people really begin to learn and adapt culturally to the fact that, obviously, we all know they shouldn't speed through school zones, but that's what this is really all about. They also can move very quickly, because they're, they have 200 and some people in our Palm Beach County community. They work here, they, they live here, they operate here, and they stand behind their equipment. Also, just to clarify, in terms of the breakdown, when you asked the question, Mayor, about the breakdown of, there's some statutory parts of that breakdown of the tickets, and then there's the decision, based on the vendor, how much will be shared between the city and the vendor. I think this one is $21, I believe. Yanoptics is $14. That's typically what they do. So this is a different, everyone bids differently, so it is not a fixed-fee arrangement. It's fixed as to the statutory amounts. It's not fixed in terms of what the companies offer forward. Over time, you know, again, not being just about the money part, but over a years' period, that's probably well into the hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars of additional resources to the taxpayers for other safety programs and other things that you may choose to use them for. So again, we're also of the opinion that it would be helpful for them to have the opportunity to present themselves to your staff, explain what they're doing, how they do it. I think if they had given, been given the opportunity, they probably would have been considered, certainly based on a lot of factors, experience, the, the equipment, the support, the fact that they're local, and also the pricing is extremely fair. So we'd ask you to consider that, as you're making your decision today. If you decide to go forward, we would ask you to consider to do an RFP, if you go forward in an expanding of the program, make a more permanent program, that gives everybody the chance to sharpen their pencils in the way they present themselves, make sure that everybody gets the best opportunity to present, and, most importantly, you and the taxpayers get the benefit of the best opportunities. the benefit of the best opportunities forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Greg Parks, I'm with Redspeed. So I wanted the opportunity to come up and, and address your staff's great work done and tell you a little bit about us to make you comfortable, that hopefully you'll bring this program forward. We are the largest provider of this service in the space, fortunate to serve more school zones than all competitors combined, more school customers. This program was brought to the southeast in Georgia in 2018. Their law is nearly identical with minor changes to the Florida law. There, we do have 70% of the market, which is about 70 customers, many name brand ones similar to Boca, Alpharetta, Gwinnett County, leading edge communities. We are data-driven, we can easily document our customers over a 90%, close to 95% reduction in speeding since implementation of the program, with less than a 10% repeat violator rate. That's really, I think, the most meaningful statistic. If I get a citation, I don't violate again. The program is working, all at no taxpayer expense. We did champion this with the Florida Legislature in 2023, based on the success of their neighbors. Many of the South Georgia customers are near Tallahassee. Since then, that program was brought out in '23, FDOT approved the guidelines in '24. We now have, I think, 30-some customers in the state, most of what I would call the ones most similar to Boca, large communities anyway, Miami-Dade County, Hillsborough County, Tallahassee, Cape Coral, Plantation. The RFP that your staff recommended certainly was the most competitive. We didn't bid, the other one mentioned, and all the companies can do the job, we're never gonna badmouth any of our competition, but it was an incredible process. Plantation ran eight respondents, oral presentations, shortlisting, thorough research. If we're fortunate enough to move forward, you'd be the 16th jurisdiction, I believe, to utilize the great agreement that your staff has identified. We're ready to move forward immediately. There's a lot of variables in implementation, permitting being the greatest, but where things do line up, as your staff, Inavitura, we're live in two weeks, we can't promise you that, it could be months, but we're ready to hit the ground running. We definitely have the most experience, we believe the best technology, why we keep being selected by all these great communities. And lastly, I guess, we're, we're blessed and fortunate that the Florida Police Chiefs Association did a deep dive on all the vendors, and we are their, their preferred vendor, and they will, they will recognize us as their preferred vendor to do the best job for the police community. So I just wanted a chance to introduce ourselves to you all and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Please, please. Sir?
Sir, I have a question.
I apologize.
That's okay, thank you for coming today. I wanted to ask about two things, because you had brought up Inavitura, which you got up and running in two weeks, and Plantation. Are you up and running in Plantation?
We are not, we're ready to go. It's the Plantation's desire, and I believe your staff may have spoke with them, they have a combination of Broward County roads and city roads. We have the city permits, but Broward County is not issuing any permits now. They're working on a revocable license agreement, which may be necessary in Palm Beach, because this will be the first ones, I think, or some on county roads. So no, we're not live in Plantation. We are live in Deerfield, because they were all city roads, and they were a piggyback off of Plantation. But we do have over 400 cameras in the ground, improving safety now in Florida.
Okay. Second question was, do you also provide portable cameras?
Yes.
Okay. And can you tell me something about SOC 2 certification?
Yeah, SOC 2 is, is a very critical standard. I don't know what the acronym stands for, I should, so I apologize, but it, it's a standard of compliance, insurance, some professional standards, and your IT security and some other things. And probably the, the greatest thing I could say why, it is a, a critical standard, we've had it for years, is, these are registered owner violations, and you want to issue it to the, the registered owner at the most current address in a very timely manner. And Florida DHS and V, in order to grant vendors access to that data, requires SOC 2 certification. So it's a real meritorious standard.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? All right, thank you.
I had a question for staff.
Thank you.
We just heard the issue that may crop up as it relates to getting permits on the city versus county roads. I know some of these school zones we have, particularly ones on military or county roads, do we anticipate an issue there?
I do anticipate there'll be an issue there. Dealing with a county, getting a permit is going to be a challenge. Staff is going to leverage all of our expertise and our relationships with the county to manage that and try and find viable locations. I would just note, too, really quick, talking about mobile deployments, I would say from staff's perspective, I do have concerns about that. We have cones that we put down to try and protect the sidewalk, those disappear, we put down barricades, we put out generators, those have disappeared. So I would just note that there are, from time to time, if we do mobile deployments and it can be moved, there is the possibility that that will happen. So I haven't, I don't know if any of the vendors have experienced that, but expensive technology has the possibility to walk away if it's not secured to the ground.
Well, that is difficult to fathom, but I guess, well, maybe it's not. Could I, a follow-up question, please? Do we, if we do anticipate, and it sounds like we might, having issues on getting permits for county roads, what would the plan be if, say, the permits for the city roads are readily available, but the ones in the county are not?
Certainly, I think at that point, we would have a discussion with the manager's office, and we would look at those top-tier roads, if it was just city. I think staff's recommendation, being that this is a pilot program, would be to go ahead and deploy those on the city roadways.
Okay, thank you.
Just following on that, first, does anyone else wish to speak on this matter? Last call, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Beer, would we need a permit from the county if we used a portable device?
Yes.
Why?
Anything, similarly, I, I don't know the county code of ordinance off the top of my head, but I'm sure I would be almost certain, similar to the city code of ordinances, if you have anything that's deployed in the county right-of-way, it would require a permit to be there.
Got it. And roughly, how lar, how many pounds is each machine?
I don't know the answer to that.
Hundreds, though?
I can't, I can't.
It's hard for, I'm hard to visualize it, someone to actually pick one up and take one, let's say in a truck.
I just think things that are not affixed to the ground sometimes disappear in the, in the right-of-ways, and I'm not saying that that has, even trailer-mounted or other things like that, I'm not saying it's even Boca Raton residents, I.
Oh, certainly not.
There, there are things, it is, it is best to secure infrastructure physically to the ground via foundation. That would be a best practice.
In terms of the pilot, what are you envisioning for the length of time for the evaluation?
That's a, a very good question. I think generally from what we've seen from some of the data, that it's going to take at least several months, because we're going to have to, there's, there's gonna be hiccups at the beginning, just like any operational process. We have to set up a, a bank account, they have to be able to have the officers trained evaluating tickets, they've, they've gotta get, get up to speed on the program. So in the early stages, there are going to be elements where we've still gotta coordinate and, and figure everything out with the vendor. So, so likely on a time scale of months to be able to really understand if the program is, is operationally functioning as it should.
And on the training point, if we enter into a pilot, undergo training with one vendor, for whatever reason, choose to seek an RFP, seek to go with another vendor in the future, is that training transferable, or do the trained people have to start training on a different system?
Yeah, excellent question, and it is, I would say, the, the skills are partially transferable. So the understanding of how to evaluate, because a physical person is going to evaluate each one of these citations, the understanding of that is going to be transferable, but it is my understanding that each vendor has a little bit of a different software or setup, so I think there would be a little bit of a learning curve to transfer or switching costs between vendors to, to understand it. I'm guessing it would be de minimis.
All right, very good. Further questions? Ms. Drucker first.
Just a quick follow-up on the county. Have we reached out to county administrators or any county?
We, we have not at, at this point.
I mean, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Brown? May I finish my comment? I think anytime we're taking on a project of this nature, sometimes it's better to start building that in advance and having those conversations. I know in the past, we've had issues with the county on other things, and the feedback that I get, and we have a commissioner that works really well, and, and a lot of different areas that supports us for our district, is having those conversations in advance. Just like we don't like to be approached, I don't, let me speak for myself, I don't like surprises, really don't like surprises. It would have been, we've been dealing with this since October and before Ms. Knackless, and you said, well, Ms. Knackless reached you on October and before that, I think it's important to start having those conversations in advance, because now we're entering a contract pilot that might or might not work, that I truthfully have trepidation, because I don't know that we've done, in my opinion, the due diligence has needed to be done with such a project. And for me, the most important thing is the public safety, it's always been, it will be, and it will continue to be. I've sit up here for five years with that messaging. So again, there's, I feel that there's so many missing pieces here that makes me a little bit uncomfortable. So, and that part of the county makes me very uncomfortable, because we had issues with the water, the, water, I'm sorry, the wildflower park, and things that were supposed to be done on the bridge, that I don't think we've still have gotten resolution. So I want to support this, because I support public safety, and obviously, I'm a mobility champion, and I've always been a public safety champion, but I'm also having challenges, because we're hearing from all these different people, and we're not following what we've done for other things in this space. So I'm a little bit uneasy on how we approach this. And then the county part, really uneasy, because as we know, they're not, they're not always working with us, but I do hear from them that we're not as proactive with them, and if maybe we worked with them more, that they would work with us. So we could make that happen, right? We did that with Parks and Beach Rec, so I know, I have faith we can. So I'm just, I don't know if everyone else is feeling, but I'm feeling a little bit torn on this one, for the reasons that I've stated.
Thank you. Ms. Knackless.
I just wanted to make a comment on the training and the, the transferable training that you mentioned, because it was my understanding with a licensed law enforcement official, that if they do, if they're the ones that are evaluating the tickets, that it's only about an hour training for each company. If you use, you know, a layperson that, that needs to get extra training, that's not a, a law enforcement official, then that's like an 80-hour training course or something like that. But as far as, if it's a law enforcement official, it's only about an hour training on each, on each, with each company. So even if it's not transferable, I don't think it's a, a big part of it.
Mr. Beer?
Certainly, I was just gonna note that I was referring to the specific softwares and the, like, operational constraints. Their background understanding to get certified appropriately to be able to take action would certainly be transferable, yes.
Very good. And is it our plan, Mr. Brown and Mr. Beer, to use sworn LEOs or to use civilian personnel as well and have them undergo the longer training?
We're gonna start probably with, with law enforcement officers when we commence, but we will look into training that civilian personnel, lesser costs, and keep the law enforcement on the road.
All right, very well. All right, any other questions? If not, we should probably get a motion on the floor, or on the table. Anyone care to move concerning Resolution 612025?
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 612025.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? Mr. Wigder.
I think we should move forward with this. I think we should have moved forward with this five months ago. We're talking about a pilot program here that's gonna help protect children. What are we talking about? And as Commissioner Drucker said, Commissioner Woodward, if you're out there listening, please help us. Please help us stop bureaucracy, because that's not acceptable in this case. If the pilot program, if you get some good data and we can move forward, as Congressman Klein said, with a real RFP, if you think that's necessary, then let's do it. But let's get this going, all right? And I, I like the way Ms. Knackless said it. If, if they could do it in, wherever it was, Plantation or someplace else in two weeks, let's get this up in two weeks. Let's stop talking. Let's get it done.
Further comments? Ms. Knackless.
I'll just come back and say, I agree with you, Mr. Wigder, I think that we should move ahead and get it done. It is, it is a pilot, the ultimate goal is to change behavior and to protect children, and I think there are gonna be, there's gonna be some bumps along the way, but whether it's Redspeed, whether it's Vera, whether it's Altiment, whether it's any other, any other company, I think they all have bumps along the way. This is technology that is, you know, everybody's looking at it right now, and you said yourself, you used a matrix with staff to evaluate what was the best value for the city. And, and you went through a lengthy process, you talked to four, six companies that you evaluated, and you chose Redspeed for this time. So we'll go through the pilot, we'll see how it goes. Commissioner Woodward, if you're listening, please help us, and, and let's move ahead.
Comments, questions? Mr. Thompson.
I think, regarding the timing, I think that that's right. I think we should move forward. And before today, I hadn't really heard from staff as to how they chose Redspeed over the competitors, so I think the points made by some of the other potential vendors were well-taken. I hadn't, I just hadn't heard how the staff decided on Redspeed. I do think it makes sense to move forward tonight with Redspeed. And I, I defer to staff, they felt that this was the best option. That's good enough for me. At the same time, I do think it makes sense that when the pilot program has concluded, it may make sense to have an RFP process, to fully have a chance to meet with all of the potential vendors, compare one over the other, and to get, maybe by that point, there's greater experience and data in other jurisdictions that can tell how well it's working, not just for us, but in other places, because this is still a relatively new thing for a lot of these jurisdictions. So by then, the picture may be a little bit clearer, and I think as a result, an RFP might make sense at that point, but I will move forward with Redspeed tonight.
Thank you. Comments?
I agree with my colleagues. This is a safety concern, we should address it, we could have addressed it earlier, we should be addressing it now. I think Ms. Drucker's point about better interaction with the county is well-served, not only here, but in many facets. And again, a compliment to Mr. Brown, I know one of your efforts has been to desilo different divisions among the city, something we're still trying to do after, I'd say, you know, a practice more of siloed thinking, which has some benefits, but has some, an unnumber of negatives. This is an opportunity for us to take this as a moment, when we see other governmental partners we can be working with, they often may take longer than we do. For example, just with the Hot Team Agreement, which we're happy to have gotten done at their last meeting, it still had to go through multiple iterations with the counties. So getting them on board and aware of things that we're planning can't hurt to notify them earlier. I do appreciate staff's approach to focus on city roads and control what we can control now. I think the points about seeing where we are and perhaps considering an RFP to respond to some of the concerns are good, but I think for now, let's move forward with a pilot, and given the contract, the ability to opt out, I think that is a good thing.
Any further discussion? Ms. Sittens, please.
Singer?
Yes.
Knackless?
Yes.
Drucker?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wigder?
Yes.
Motion passes, five votes to zero.
Thank you. We will now turn to regular public hearings for settlements, and we'll ask Ms. Sittens, oh, please.
We had B.
I'm sorry, we will not, because we're gonna go to 12B first, yes, which is Resolution 622025, and Ms. Sittens will read that first.
Resolution 622025. A resolution of the City of Boca Raton, approving the continued existence of the Boca Raton Community Redevelopment Agency and extending its legal existence to September 30th, 2043, pursuant to Section 163.3755 Florida statutes, providing for severability, providing for appeal, or providing an effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, we're recommending adoption of this resolution. By background, as the council's aware, CRA was created by the city council in 1980 for the redevelopment efforts in downtown Boca Raton, and under current state law, the CRA is scheduled to sunset on September 30th, 2039, unless city council takes formal action to continue and extend its term. The resolution before you formally approves the continued existence of the CRA and extends its legal existence through September 30th, 2043. This action preserves the city's ability to maintain and implement its long-term redevelopment strategy. As I mentioned to all of you earlier today, the timing of this resolution is also significant, because the legislature, Florida legislature, is currently considering Senate Bill 1242, which if adopted, will restrict future extensions of CRA's existence unless such action were taken by May 1st of this year. Therefore, while the bill has not yet been finalized or not been enacted, adopting this resolution now ensures the CRA's continued existence and extension are finalized prior to that potential change. There is no fiscal impact, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council members, any questions? All of them, the floor to public comment, anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Last call, and we'll entertain a motion, public comment on this item alone, you, I have your card for public request generally. Seeing no one come forward. Seeing no one come forward on this particular item, we'll close the public hearing. Please.
Just, I wanted to acknowledge the cooperation of the City Attorney's Office in resolving this issue promptly today when identified.
All right. Thank you. We will close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 62-2025. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I'll just add, I want to thank city staff and the city attorney for two things. One, we have been discussing this conceptually for a while. So it's good that we were able to pivot in anticipating things. I would encourage us, as things may happen between now and July 1, to continue to move quickly. You demonstrated good work in moving quickly to close the loop on something we had talked about for a while. If there's other things out there, let's move them on the agenda earlier. If there's no further discussion, then Ms. Sittens, please.
Drucker?
Yes.
Naklis?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wigder?
Yes.
Singer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Five votes to zero.
Thank you. That concludes regular public hearings now. Now we will move to regular public hearings for settlements and I'll ask Ms. Sittens to write, read the title of Resolution 53-2025.
Resolution number 53-2025. A resolution of the City of Boca Raton considering the application of 1489 Mortage LLC for a settlement and reduction of one code enforcement lien imposed against property located at 1489 West Palmetto Park Road, providing for severability, providing for appeal or providing an effective date.
Mr. Brown? Thank you, Mayor. Erin Seeta of the Development Services Department will make the presentation on Resolution number 53-2025.
Ms. Seeta.
Good evening. The item before you, is my mic on, yes. The item before you, as previously stated, is a lien reduction request for the property located at 1489 West Palmetto Park Road. The subject site is located in the Professional Office and Institutional Zoning District, or the POI. It was developed in 1986 with a four-story commercial office building. The applicant for this particular item is Ellie Zacharitis on behalf of the property owner who is 1489 Mortgage LLC. The request is to reduce the code enforcement lien of $118,220. The applicant is requesting 100% reduction. Staff is recommending a 75% reduction with payment in 30 days. Some history on this particular case. The property was cited, case number 13-2021, on May 13th, 2014. The NOV, or the Notice of Violation, identified several life safety violations, including concrete falling from the ceilings in the parking garage, failure to maintain the building's roof as well. And you can see some of the photos here on the screen. On May 14th, the special magistrate issued an order of enforcement with several dates and compliance actions. One of them was to immediately close off the third and fourth floors of the parking garage, obtaining a permit for concrete restoration, repairs to the main building by June 13th, and completing all repairs by September 13th, 2014. And due to the severity of the life safety violations, failure to meet these compliance timelines would result in $1,000 daily fine. So the owners failed to comply with any of the required dates and were not returning contact and corresponding clearly with staff. And so at the October 8th, 2014 meeting, the special magistrate certified $118,000 in fines, as well as $220 in administrative fees were certified as lien. And that was for the 118 days between June 14th and October 8th. The case was ultimately closed in June 20, on June 29th, 2015. And the staff did not seek additional certification of liens, or certification of liens on this particular case because the property owners began to work towards compliance on the particular case. Subsequently, between 2015 and 2021, there was a series of code compliance cases were opened and resolved related to a variety of life safety violations, including but not limited to work without permit, no back generator, issues related to fire pumps, fire alarms, emergency exit signs, doors, and emergency lighting. They were complied prior to certification of any further liens on those particular subsequent cases as well. So the current applicant fully acquired the property in March of 2019. It was previously owned, had a condominium-style ownership with five property owners. Subsequently, the current applicant proceeded with a substantial redevelopment of the property, including development approvals, which authorized the addition of 16,296 square feet of office space, and exterior site and building modifications, which it definitely looks a lot better, I think. The applicant has requested, as I previously stated, 100% reduction of the lien pursuant to Section 2-121, subsection 5 of the Code of Ordinances. The decision on lien reduction rests with you all as the City Council. Staff is recommending a approximately 75% reduction to a total of $30,000 based on the following factors. The first factor is there were serious life safety violations that occurred in the property and then continue to re-incur of the fire code, the building code, and the International Property Maintenance Code. Secondly, there were significant staff time and resources were expended by the city over multiple years and ensuring that the property was complying with these minimum requirements. And finally, the applicant has completed a substantial renovation of the property, which is why the staff is supporting the 75% reduction. So that concludes my presentation. And I know the applicant has a presentation as well.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions of staff? Mr. Wigder?
Yes. You said that there were substantial renovations to the property, including expansion. And I assume that they got permits to do those things?
Yes.
And did they pay for those permits?
Yes.
And how much did they pay in fees, permit fees?
Oh, I don't have that information.
Do we know the approximate value of the work that was put in to improve the property in addition to the repairs that were done?
It was a substantial reduction, I mean, a substantial improvement, sorry.
Like millions, like a couple million or?
Yes, probably, yes, I would say millions. And the applicant is here, that's probably a question better geared towards them. I just, I just was, I didn't have that prepared. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. I'll ask the applicant. Thank you. Staff, questions?
Ms. Seeta, Ms. Seeta, excuse me. You said that there were continuing violations that occurred up until 2021. Could you describe more of the nature of the violations that acquired after the applicant completed the acquisition in 2019 and the end of 2021?
There was parking garage disrepair violations and, and 2021 was the one. And then that was, a permit was submitted subsequently to repair that concrete and then that was ultimately finalized in 2021. The permit, the main permit for the renovation, I believe, was final in July 19th of 2024. But in all those cases, I know once the current property owner took over, took over the property, that they were working towards compliance in good faith. So there's no concern about the current applicant not working or when an issue arose, they were actively engaged in making the property better and going through the development review process. So when that particular case occurred. I know during the time when the, when the, when the property was in, in transition from 2013 to 2015, there were several, there was a fire department violation and there was also an unpermitted work identified in the building.
But I was asking just after 2019. So what I heard is that there was, was that a new violation or was that a continuation?
They were new violations.
After 2019?
Yes.
And but no fines were certified?
No.
Were any fines levied by the magistrate?
No, no. The, in fact, the cases were opened, but the applicant, the notices of violation were issued, but the applicant complied prior to, prior to going, taking them to special magistrate. So we don't always get an order of enforcement. Kind of what we talked about is like our process really, I don't know if you remember, it's been a while, but we, we have up to five inspections before we actually get a lien. And we'll have multiple inspections prior to scheduling the order of enforcement hearing for any particular violation. And we don't, we try to work with, with property owners. If they're complying and they're moving forward towards compliance, we try not to take them back to the special magistrate for an order of enforcement. So.
Thank you. Further questions? All right. We'll invite the applicant to come forward and anyone else who wishes to speak.
Ellie Zacharitis, 14 Southeast Fourth Street. I do have a very thorough presentation, but I think I'm just going to speak off the cuff. Mr. Wigder, we paid to date $356,000 in building permit fees in the renovation of this project. Ms. Seeta, thank you so much for your very thorough presentation. Mr. Doug Shidi is not here today, but I do want to thank him as well for working very diligently with us as we go through this process. First and foremost, I understand why there are violations and of course, safety is of everyone's utmost concern. And I also understand why there's fines associated with violations when bad actors do not cure and do not cure timely. Unfortunately, that is not the case here. So while there were in fact, bad actors and there was in fact, a violation and fines did accrue, the owners of this property are not them. They were not the bad actors. So all of this started in 2014. As Ms. Seeta noted, they were not, Grover Curlew was not the owner of either 1489, which is this building, or 1499, which is the building just to the south that abuts Palmetto Park Road. It wasn't until approximately 2016, I believe, that Grover Curlew bought the southern building, not this building, the southern building. There is significant amount of parking, there's shared parking between the two buildings, and there is significant amount of parking in this building in 1489. It did not take Grover Curlew long to figure out that their asset in 1499 is in jeopardy when 1489 is falling apart. So at that point in 2017, actually, let me back up. The 1489 is five unit owners. It was an office condominium. There was significant mismanagement. It went into receivership. There were lawsuits internally in that building and it went into receivership. Grover Curlew now owning 1499 is seeing, not understanding the receivership or any of that, just merely seeing that 1489 is falling in disrepair. So in order to secure their asset at 1499, they decided that they're going to start attempting to buy units at 1489. They bought their first unit in 2017. They did not have control over the association at that time. They had one unit. They worked very diligently, ended up foreclosing on some units, going into receivership on some units. It wasn't until 2019 that they secured complete control of this building. So everything that happened, happened four years before my client had ownership or control over this building. Since that time, and I think this is very important, since 2019, from 2019 to 2024, our clients secured ownership of 1489. They assembled a team to prepare plans for submittal. They submitted to the City of Boca Raton and it wasn't a small task. It was a rezoning, a comprehensive plan amendment, a site plan approval with an expansion. It took significant amount of work to assemble that project. Your staff worked extremely diligently. We got through that process. Then we prepared construction drawings, submitted for building permit, paid $356,000 in building permit fees, issued our permit, and did all of the work. And all of that was done in five years. That is quite impressive. I actually applaud them for that. They did that in five years. Now, why didn't we come here sooner for a lien reduction? Because I'm not eligible for one until all the violations are cured. I worked very diligently with your staff to ensure that we were ready to submit our lien reduction as soon as we got our TCO, which we got in April of 2024. And I submitted my lien reduction request in May of 2024. So no time was wasted. Grover Curlew did everything they possibly could to ensure that they worked quickly. They wanted to. I mean, they're businessmen and quite frankly, they're not making any money. Instead, they're losing over $30 million in improvements in this building. I personally live right down the street and I love it. I think it's a great asset to our city. It's, in my opinion, the most beautiful office building we have to date. I'm not going to do my presentation, but I do just want to scroll and show you some pictures. For those of you that have been, great, I appreciate your time and meeting on site. For those that haven't had an opportunity, we welcome it anytime if you want to come and see it. But this is, the interiors now, I'm pretty sure you would agree, this is stark different than what it looked like before. And I have both Anush Grover and Mark Curlew here if you have any questions. And that's it. I'm here to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions? All right. Seeing none, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Do you want to speak, Mr. Grover? No, all right.
I was just going to clear up a few points, which were...
Please. Well, 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 wait until you're on the microphone so the friends at home can hear you too.
Apologize. Anush Grover, on behalf of the building owner, I was just going to clear up a few points, which is, in 2017, we bought the debt of the, one of the unit owners. So we actually had to go through the foreclosure process to actually get ownership before we could actually then reconstitute the Board of Directors, of which at that point in time, there still was a receiver that was appointed by the courts. And so even after we acquired all the units, the receiver could not be dismissed by the courts or they weren't dismissed by the court, the receiver controlled the association until all of the items that was open with the city was in fact, cleared. At least that's how it was explained to us. So that was just a point that I really wanted to make sure you all understood. So we, we had been working since, I mean, prior to even buying the debt, when we bought the neighboring building in 2016, we've been working from 2016 to 2019 just to try and get control of this. So it was, it was a project that just needed, I mean, it desperately needed something. And I mean, I'm sure the staff spent a crazy amount of time trying to get this back in, back into control. So I know there was also some conversation about 2019 to 2021. Again, that wasn't us. There was a receiver in place that controlled the association. As soon as we got, as soon as we got control of the building, we, I mean, obviously, we have to go through a process of hiring engineers and the like before you could just willy-nilly start addressing the problems because we wanted to address it in the right way. That's all I wanted to add. Thanks.
Sorry. I forgot to, go ahead.
You're, one second. You've already spoken once, this is not a typical hearing, but Ms. Zacharitis, would you like to add anything?
I forgot to add my ask. I do appreciate that staff is willing to reduce it by 75%. I very much appreciate that. But again, in light of the fact that these are not the bad actors, we respectfully request that they not be penalized and we move forward with $0, 100% reduction.
Ms. Zacharitis, since Mr. Grover was kind enough that staff spent a great deal of time dealing with this and they are standing in the shoes, how would you assess, how would you suggest that we factor in that considerable staff time and expense to the taxpayer?
Sure. And I do appreciate staff. I work with them very regularly. And Mr. Shad, Mr. DiNarcio, and Mr. Shidi came on site. They were so pleasantly surprised with what this looked like while we were preparing for a TCO. They applauded our efforts. I do recognize that they put a lot of time into this. But again, it was with another group of people, which is not us. But what we have delivered to you is not just 356,000 in building permit fees and not just a 30-plus something, 30-plus million dollar renovation, but we have a beautiful building in our city that we can all be proud of.
Thank you. Further questions? All right. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. We will close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 53-2025.
So moved.
All right. Thank you. You have to, you have to determine, you have to, anyone moving should state what the amount is, if we're going to grant the reduction and at what amount. So.
Wait. Go ahead. I thought we were just going to have discussion.
Right, but, right, but we, the motion has blanks in it, so we need, right, we need to, we need to come up with a, someone should suggest something.
So, okay, so, okay, here we go.[1793.33] I move that we go with staff's recommendation for discussion at 30,000.
Okay, all right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion.
I, can I make an alternate motion?
No, you can move to amend the, you can move to amend the motion on the floor, but I would suggest, why don't you discuss your point first, and then Mr. Thompson will speak, and then we can see where we land.
Okay.
Mr. Wigder.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a situation where the buyer of the property went through a significant legal process beyond all our control, really, in terms of foreclosing on the note, and then acquiring enough condominium to therefore, I guess, terminate the condominium, and to do the right thing. So they, they bought it with some baggage, right? And the baggage is what happened before. And so after that, they spent millions and millions of dollars, and I guess we could back into how much money they actually spent in order to produce $356,000 of permit fees. We're talking about a significant improvement. The property's then put into service. If you look at Papa, you will see that the assessed valuation of the property has now increased. So now I believe they're paying more taxes each year, 100,000 or so, more in taxes, because they've tried to do the right thing. It's a great adaptive reuse project. I've been in the project before it was converted, and it's really, I can't believe it's, you were able to do this with that building. I thought, I thought at one point it just had to come down, because it was, and it was in bad shape. And so I do appreciate your investment in the city and in the tax base, because you believe in this, and of course, the University of Miami did too. And I'm appreciative of them also. So for that reason, I don't think the 75% reduction really, you know, I think it's arbitrary. And to your, to your point, once they took it over in 2019, I think they tried to move as fast as reasonably possible, given the, what they had to do there. There was no way they can certify it faster. So, you know, I would agree to, I'd like to amend this to reduce it, you know, maybe if you want to show something to reflect the work, but again, the work of staff, the work of those things is in the $356,000 in permit fees, and it's in the annual taxes that they pay us each year, that have now gone up substantially. So I'd remove, I'd move to move that $30,000. I'd have an additional 75% reduction, and I'd call it $7,500, and let's call it a day.
All right, Mr. Thompson?
I appreciate staff's analysis and the work they put into this, going back to 2014 and through now. And I also appreciate your, the efforts been, have been made by the staff to compromise on this situation. I, I feel like each one of these, I always say, these are tricky. Lien reduction requests are tricky. And this, I think, arguably is more unique than most, for some of the reasons that were just mentioned. I do think that this applicant has demonstrated diligence towards compliance when the issues arose after they acquired the building, which happened in 2019. It never got to the point where they incurred fines. I think that's demonstrated by the fact that they have, in good faith, in utmost, utmost good faith, worked towards addressing those things. The fact that the staff is, and I, I think I agree with you in a way, Mr. Wigder, that a lot of times these, the offered reductions can be arbitrary, like the number you settle up on is kind of, you know, can be arbitrary. But the fact that such a significant reduction was offered by the staff here reflects the mitigating factors that are present, the overwhelming mitigating factors, I think, in my view. It was a product of the tortured ownership and litigation history, I think, that led them to the position that they're in here, and not these owners. And so we say this whenever these comes up, whenever these lien reduction requests come up, the point of the code enforcement process is to ensure compliance. And in my view, anyway, exacting a fine like this on these owners does not promote compliance in this building or in any other part of the city, given the kind of mitigating factors that are present. If anything, to exact a fine like this, even at the 75% reduction, would seem to me to be punishing the son for the sins of the father, as we read somewhere once. And in my view, I think that this situation calls for grace. So it would be my preference that we reduce the fine all the way down to zero, like the applicant has requested.
Comments? Ms. Nackliss?
So, well, I'm certainly open to, to considering everything. There's a couple of things that I want to point out here. So the applicant fully acquired the property in 2019. They were part owners prior to that, and they did have knowledge of the liens that were on this property when they were acquiring the property. So when I was talking to Ms. Zacharitis, she told me around 2017 was when they were, when they were, knew about the liens. And, you know, I brought up the, the comparison, well, what if there was a lien on my home and I was trying to sell it, somebody wouldn't be able to close on it until they satisfied that lien. And so, you know, I, I appreciate, I also think this is one of the prettiest office space in, in the city, and I've been in it, I've toured it. I think it's absolutely beautiful, and I, I agree that, you know, they've paid so much in permit fees, and have done so much to get into compliance and ensure compliance. But just want to have that discussion about, you know, they, they did know about these liens when they bought the, they, they were not, wasn't just the sins of the father, they, they knew about this also. They were part, no, they were not part owners? Okay.
And actually, yes, I was going to, when you were done, I was going to ask a question relating to that, but you can...
Okay, that's what I understood from our discussion, but if I'm wrong, please, Mr. Mayor, if she can...
Sure, do, could we have Ms. Zacharitis, or do you want to ask a question? Ask the question to staff, please, then.
So I, Ms. Nackliss, I had a similar question from Ms. Zacharitis about, when you buy a house, there's usually, there are liens in place. And what you discussed with me was that you were not aware that the liens were in place. So Ms. Zacharitis, can you clarify so that Ms. Nackliss and the rest of us are all on the same page? Because that's different, that what she got was different than what I got, and I want to make sure we're on the right page.
Sure, sorry for the confusion. First, yes, they did own a unit in 2017. They bought their first one. They did not have control. There's one unit owner that owned 53%, and they had control. It was also in receivership and completely out of their control. They did not know about the liens. And Ms. Nackliss, I'm sorry if there was any confusion, but if you recall, I showed in the Zoom call, the email that Mark had drafted to one of your colleagues that said they were not aware of any liens when they purchased the property. We had no idea that this was happening, yes. Did we own a small fraction of the building? They did, but it was in courts. They had no knowledge of any liens being placed on the property prior to their purchase.
No knowledge of any, no, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
You may go.
No knowledge of any notice of violation?
No.
Okay. Then I misunderstood when you...
Yes, and I apologize.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, thank you.
And Ms. Zacharitis, you were referring to the email that Mr. Curlew sent in response to my questions.
That's correct.
I'm still a little confused here, because the, the liens were a record, and there was some reference to something that happened with title, that we're unclear why title didn't pick it up? Is it because of the way you acquired the interests? It wasn't a straight, you didn't acquire fee simple?
We, yes, I'll let Mr. Grover...
That's correct. We didn't acquire fee simple. In 2017, we acquired the debt. Then you had to go through the process of foreclosing on the debt in order to get title. So, and then when you got title, you only got title to certain amount of units, not the association. I believe the lien was associated with the association, not those particular units. Also, I don't believe that, even if you did, I, I believe we did a property search at the time when we acquired the units, and I don't believe the, the city lien actually showed up in the property search. I think you could have done a, a separate municipal lien search, and I think it would have picked, that in of itself would have picked it up. But it wasn't actually in the recorded chain of title of the land.
And I guess, for some reason, you or your attorneys, professionals, did not do that municipal lien search?
Well, again, we bought, we bought merely the debt because we were looking at a building that was falling over. So, I mean, we, we sort of embarked on this process to try and actually get the building, air quotes, fixed. The other thing is, if you, if you would, and not, not to be argumentative, but if you look at, I mean, this is for actions part of 2015, and even the city said, in their presentation, that the staff said that the case was closed in 2015.
But the lien was before then? Okay, all right, thank you, I guess.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
This is for Development Services. This is an office condominium, just a condominium in general. When a lien is assessed on a condominium unit, obviously, the title of a unit is its own parcel. So how is a code enforcement lien against, put on each unit? Is it put on every single unit, or is it put on the units in question? Obviously, would even code enforcement, would they even know that it's a condominium?
I'm going to hope the city attorney can help me a little bit, but I believe that it's a technical issue, and you can actually choose to, if you're leaning the entire property, I believe you can choose to, to lean every single unit within the condominium, I believe is how it works. But you can also fail to do that and only lean one unit.
So, Councilmember Wigder, and to the rest of the council, so, again, under the statute, you have a violator and an owner of a property, and so we're dealing with a condominium, commercial condominium.
A unit. When you say a violator, it's a, is an owner of a unit? Not...
I'm saying, I'm saying generally, just big picture, under Chapter 162, the statute allows for code enforcement, says a violator who owns property that's in violation gets an opportunity to cure, et cetera, et cetera. You go through the process. At the end of that process, there is an order imposing fine, and then it's recorded. In this case, so there's no, statute doesn't talk to condominiums per se, but in this case, the order was against 1489 West Palmetto Park Road. There was a PCN. It was recorded in 2015 against TransFlorida Bank Center condo, Unit 3.
Ah, one unit.
That's how it was recorded. I can't speak to why it was recorded that way. I don't have the entire code file in front of me. I know that the order imposing fine was against TransCenter, TransFlorida Center, Inc., for a PCN that code enforcement staff selected at that time, with an address of 1489 West Palmetto Park Road. Again, based upon the nature of the violation, just my understanding is, it was an intent to encumber the property, but the, I just tell you that the certified fine was recorded July 2015 against Unit 3.
I withdraw my motion for 7,500, and I agree with Mr. Thompson.
All right. Well, it was never on the floor. I mean, I, could, could I, someone from the applicant confirm, were you guys title, were you guys condo Unit 3? At what point?
No. I mean, we own it now. We own it all now, but no, not at the time of, in 2017 or in 2019.
When did, when did condo, when did Unit 3 come into the picture? For the end?
The last unit they acquired.
Got it. All right, last unit.
I think that was the 53%, wasn't it? No?
All right, thank you. Ms. Drucker.
Okay, I don't have a question about that. My question is a point of clarification from Ms. Sita. You said that there was violations on, on building and, and things in 2000, between 2019 and 2021. Was that with these new, can you clarify, was that when they already acquired the entire property, or is that still ongoing from the previous issues?
During the time that those violations occurred, I'm not sure about the 2021 violation, when they particularly acquired what percentage of the building, or if it was in receivership, but the 2015 violation, which was, which were the life safety violations, and the 2017, which was work without permit, I believe at that time that they had, according to their information, had one unit, and did not have full ownership of the entire condominium association. So it was the prior owner.
Prior owner, okay, thanks.
All right, so I think there was a motion to amend by Mr. Wigder to go to zero on the fine?
Yes.
All right, is there a second for that?
There is a second, yes.
All right. This is a murky one. I'm inclined to go with this, the zero. I wouldn't, first, staff gave a very generous reduction, more than typical, but this is a very atypical situation. What the city attorney just read about condo Unit 3 is a very availing fact in my instance. And also, I would suggest, this is a great opportunity for us to look at our code enforcement process, because we have an outstanding property owner who's invested and really transformed a property. And we don't have a program yet for, it doesn't come up often, but I just consider whether it's worthwhile. Other cities have programs to encourage, we, actually, do we have a program, Mr. Shad, where we encourage, where if someone's going to invest in a property, we work with them at the outset in terms of their liens, or we don't do something like that?
So the lien reduction process is just what you see here. Now, we certainly can, and maybe induce them to say, yes, we will be generous in our recommendation if you diligently, you know, fix the issues, but that's not really a set process. It's just a matter of course.
It doesn't come up often. This is an extreme case or an unusual case, and hard cases make tough laws. So I would say that this one stands alone, but I'm inclined to go with the, the zero on this one. All right, so we have a motion to amend that's been seconded. Any further discussion on the amendment? Then all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Amendment's 5-0, then we'll go now to the motion. Any further discussion on the motion as amended to reduce it to zero? No further discussion, then Ms. Sittens, please.
Mayor?
Oh, please.
For the record, Section 1 of the resolution will read, "The lien is hereby reduced by The total amount of the lien due is therefore zero, and no payment is required."
All right, thank you for clarifying. I think that was clear, and now it's extra clear. Ms. Sittens, please.
Wigder?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Singer?
Yes.
Nackliss?
Yes.
Drucker?
Yes.
Motion passes, five votes to zero.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, we'll now turn to public requests. I have two cards from Michael Wood and Anastasia Kolos. Please come forward. You have up to three minutes. Please give your name and address.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Michael Wood. I reside at 18516 Ocean Mist Drive, Boca Raton. I'm here tonight in my professional capacity as a consultant for projects with unique and complex permitting needs. I currently have multiple projects making their way through the city of Boca Raton's Building Department. I am pleased to be able to bring attention to the wonderful job that the city's Building Department staff is doing by offering concierge service, type services, that are needed for large projects. This group of individuals has proven to be flexible and nimble in order to meet the needs of these projects as they arise throughout the process. Specifically, I'd like to recognize the efforts of Brandon Shad, Chief Building Official, Mike DiNarcio, Deputy Building Official, Jerry Solinsky, Nahai James, Assistant to Mike DiNarcio, Denette Hughes, Tori Boone, Jay Sumner, and Dan Rush, the Assistant Fire Marshal, and the many other departments that support the permit approval process here in Boca. In the last several years, my clients, including but not limited to Baptist Hospital, Boca Raton, the Boca Raton, excuse me, name change, Town Center Mall, Martin Manor, and others, have paid to the city over $10 million in permitting fees. It is not uncommon for my firm to have as many as 70 permits moving through your system at any one time. I feel like that gives me some insight, and that's why I come to you here tonight, to provide this feedback that you probably don't get from a lot of folks. A success, a successful project from conception to completion is a success for the owner, the city, and the, and the, you know, the owner and the city. Again, I want to commend the Building Department for the assistance they provide, and thank you tonight for allowing me to share this with you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood, for not only your kind comments, which we appreciate, and we appreciate our hardworking staff. Thank you for waiting two and a half hours just to share them publicly. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
May I add something, Mayor?
Please.
Mr. Wood, good to see you. Feel free to come back anytime.
I'll take you.
Thank you. Ms. Kolos.
Hello, my name is Anastasia Kolos. I live at 199 Mansfield E., Boca Raton, Florida, 33434. I have stated... I have stated before that I have attained over 75 signatures of people that have reviewed my evidence in regards to hacks that have become rampant in Boca Raton, and they want a cyber task force. Some of the signatures come from students at FAU, FIU, and PCU professor, with seven signatures coming from IT professionals, and two are former military servicemen. I am going to be collaborating with David Fowler, who has over 30 years of experience and works as the Director of Education for Cisco, right here in Boca. This is a local cybersecurity professional. Anything related to Cisco is huge. And tutelage under the biggest man in cybersecurity in Palm Beach County, Richard Mendel, who trains the FBI and military. He's also given me a compliment as well, and I'm only stating this just so I make sure that you guys don't think I'm making this up. I've gotten the signatures, I have professionals around me, I'm bringing valid stuff to your attention. In addition to this, I have gotten a letter from Mayor Singer that I want to also state. Mayor Singer has stated that you guys do not control the police stations, and what I have done is, especially if you look at some of the paperwork, but I know I've given you guys a lot of papers, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold on to them, is this is more than just a police force, I'm actually looking to alter the name and call it maybe Cyber Knights, where you would actually have people not just combat cybercrime, but solve problems in the community, utilizing something that I call FEH. An example for this would be like for infrastructure, which I've spoken with Mr. Lukasik in regards to. These knights would actually look into enhancing security measurements for them. Councilmember Drucker is very concerned about women's rights and stuff like that. Hackers in the Boca Raton area target women for rape utilizing hacker cables that are disseminated at stores like Best Buy and Apple. These knights would take care of the ladies. And then, in addition to that, Mr. Singer, I know you stated you guys don't oversee the police, so this would be a group of volunteers that would not just do the stuff that I stated, but this would actually like maybe be one of the most revolutionary concepts in, I think, Boca Raton history, because, and I know I haven't sat down and talked to you guys, but I was looking to solve every problem in this city that a cybercriminal can possibly do, and this involves like even increasing TOD residents, like Councilmember Wigder has stated, and bring attention to the Boca Raton area. In addition to this, I know I might look a little bit weird.
Ms. Kolos, could you please conclude?
Okay, I would like to set up appointments with you all, because it's really hard for me to talk during the three minutes, and I think if I sat down with maybe a couple of you, I might be able to actually showcase what I'm really trying to do, which is solve some problems that are not being properly addressed in Boca.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak under public request? Time for public request is closed. We'll now turn to introduction of ordinances. We have none. We have no quasi-judicial public hearings for variances in appeal, so we'll turn to city manager reports and recommendations. Mr. Brown.
I have no additional reports.
Thank you. City Attorney reports?
No report.
Thank you, Mr. Kaler. I'll turn to my right for Councilmember reports. Mr. Wigder.
Yes, I have a brief report. So last week, the county's Affordable Housing Commission hosted all the local affordable housing commissions, and Boca Raton was very well represented up there. They talked about the recommendations. Of course, as we're familiar, the list is quite statutory, there's a list of like 10 things you can do, and stuff like that, and increased density, lower permit fees for affordable housing, expedite processing time. But something that was discussed that the county recommends is the use of TDRs, transferable development rights, to allow for density bonuses if they're not used in a certain area. Theirs was up to five units an acre bonus for attainable housing. Maybe it's something Boca Raton can consider in the right place, rather than rezoning each lot one by one, or more complicated adaptive reuse plans, just to get this special mixture of uses. The county's plan is easily available on the website, it's something that we can start to look into. It could be an opportunity for us to increase homeownership and affordable housing. Likewise, condo builders, we talked about this, the CIMD regs that we passed, they're really not conducive to building condominiums, and they're hard to do financially, it's difficult. I know Tallahassee's worried about it, but again, the numbers don't pencil out, it's not so easy to do. So condo builders could potentially buy out of the CIMD regs, and CIMD builders could then buy the TDRs, the bonus, what they need to make the numbers work from a TDR bank, as it says right here, that they're doing in the county, to get the density bonus to make the numbers work. The PM, the Plan Mobility Zone, things like in that northern sector, where there's a lot of land, is a good place for us to start looking at this. In many other cities, they've already done this. In New York, they've been doing it for decades, so this is not inventing the wheel, it's just trying to give people the tools, the menu, to approve properties like the former people just came up here and did, so it's another way. Another topic that we discussed was this acknowledgement that workforce housing and transit are linked, right? It's the total cost of housing and getting to work that strains families, autos, insurance, maintenance. So by doing what we just started to do, bicycle-oriented developments, this is one in Houston where we just were, you know, by making living and working close to each other, you're reducing the total workforce cost, because you're reducing their transit number. And we already see that, people scootering and biking on the tri-rail, obviously, you know, e-bikes are an issue there, but the, obviously, people are using those last mile logistics, and as Mr. Brown said, those numbers for people using those buses, they're going up, because the total cost is what the workforce is trying to reduce here, and if the housing cost is not going down, well, then they have to reduce their transit cost. So we need to start looking at these holistically. And of course, shared-use trail adjacent properties, they enjoy definitely value increases. Initially, as I said, initially, they start with walls, but then as people start to see the value increase, they put doors in, because they realize that it's tremendous value to be adjacent to a shared-use trail. So there might be a lot of NIMBs there that are not, aren't interested, but again, the door is opening up increased value to your property by being used to something where you and your children can bike safely all the time, so maybe it's something we can consider. And just as values near transit and shared use are perceived higher, conversely, property values can get deeply, deeply slashed when mass transit is reduced, as this article in the CRA Daily came up literally this morning, in terms of potential Philly cuts to service. And I thought about this in relation to the tri-rail, because there's been some discussions about significant cuts to tri-rail, and I hope the people, you know, up there are listening a little bit, is to just be careful about that, because cutting tri-rail might, in the short term, look like you're saving, you know, $10 million or something like that, but ultimately, getting these people away from transit opportunity is gonna reduce property values, that's gonna be far more than $10 million. So please, consider the options here, in terms of those links between housing, transit, and property values, they're all linked together. So please consider that. We started this, the adaptive reuse that we talked about last week in the northern sector of the El Rio Trail, the adjacent properties has begun. So I think we can expand on this, keep working on it, in addition to the CIMD, whether we do TDRs, or rebrand the PM, but to get some organizations, some, you know, really kind of master planning going in this sector, because that's where the land is, and that's where the opportunities are. And like I said, we've just started with one. We've just started with one project there, so there's, this is just the beginning. And a point on these lien reductions, as we saw, this was an older building. A lot of Boca's office buildings are getting older, so you have 13 million square feet of potential adaptive reuse that is going to happen in this next cycle, and we're gonna have to give the private sector a way, an opportunity to invest in that, you know, and it can't just be with CIMD, it's gonna have to be, you know, a menu of services to give the private sector an opportunity here. So again, it was, I applaud that, you know, that person for starting, that entity for starting this, and I think it opens the door for us to do more. So let's, so let's start on that. Let's think about that, I'll keep working on it, too. Happy Earth Day to everybody, and let's keep doing great things. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Drucker.
Thank you. So I'm gonna prepare some remarks for the next meeting. As all of you know, I said it here, I was on a bike immersion event that I went to last week, that was outside of the states, and what I came back with was that a lot of the issues that they're having in other parts of the world are also happening here in our backyard, when it comes to mobility, transportation, and housing. And I have so much information, so much data. I biked in Amsterdam from a city to another city, to another city, and I also biked in a city in Paris, where it's very similar to what we have here, including in our roads in Boca, because we have, they have unprotected lanes, they're just delineated with a marker, but it was interesting to see the mindset of the individuals there, because even someone like me that's not an expert biker, I was able to bike in the traffic without having protective barriers, and then I was able to bike in areas where they just implemented protective barriers in the last five years. And not only did they put these protected lanes in preparation for the Olympics, but how quickly they did it, and how they were able to close complete roundabouts, and how they were able to completely shut down at times the Champs Elysees, and people were able to still get around. And what I tell you, my colleagues, because I can't wait to prepare this presentation, is we struggle with closing a small area. We need to be bold, and we need to be challenging Alta Planning staff, Mr. Speck, to bring us bold, holistic approaches to the downtown, because of a place that Paris, France, could do radical changes in a five-year period, we can do a lot in the city of Boca. And it really opened my eyes to how slow we move, and how we can't even do a built-out in six months. We can't even put a barricade up and close a street. I went throughout other parts of these two countries where they've activated streets by putting plants like the ones we have in front of us. I saw it a day, they brought us there at night. We started at 8:00, we ended way in the evening, biking, walking, understanding the pedestrian activism, the school areas where they've added these areas for the children, for the parents. It was the most enlightening experience, and I've done a lot of these transit peer exchange, and I want to thank the Transit Planning Agency, the Dutch Embassy, who's, which worked with us on this particular trip, and I had people on the trip that weren't also from Palm Beach, who were from Broward and Miami, and different stakeholders, and it wasn't all elected, there was urban planners, all different groups of individuals educating us on this process. So I'm gonna put something together as soon as I can, hopefully for the next meeting, so that I could present it, and then I will be having, you know, follow-up meetings with Mr. Brown, and on some of the stuff that I brought back. And the other part that I found really fascinating, and I'm gonna leave it at that, was the amount of signage and education. Everywhere I went, even if there wasn't anyone there, and I didn't even have a phone, they have signage everywhere where it says, "We are fixing this plant. This plant project is $2 million. This is where we're gonna start the project. This is where we're gonna end the project." I don't have to have a cellphone, I don't have to be on the internet, I don't have to come to a meeting. It's right there. Whatever they were doing in that particular road, whatever they were doing in the particular area, in the particular district, they're divided by districts, they, we, I knew, I didn't have to research, nobody had to tell me. I could've done the tour pretty much on my own, and I would've known that on that street, they're doing this because of X, Y, and Z. So I think as we continue with our process and our policy changes and our implementation, that's a really great way of educating, even on things that we're doing, say, Meisner Park, if we put in a bike lane, if we put in a, you know, water fountain, the doggy fountain, everything was on a big board, big-sized board, and it just said, this is where we started, this is where we're going, this is the history, this is what we're trying to do, this is how much it's gonna cost you, the taxpayer, dollars. It was so enlightening. I have to say, I've only been back for two days, and I'm still processing a lot of the information, but I can't wait to share the rest of it with you. So that's my report. Happy Earth Day, and we're still monitoring legislative updates. There's a lot of information coming out as we continue to go before we conclude on May 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Knackless.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we had two proclamations today and a presentation, but I was also at the Community Garden today with some members from the Junior League, and also from the Fuller Center. We were there giving a proclamation on your behalf and the city's behalf for Earth Day, so thank you for providing that. The kids all got to do a bunch of different events there, they got to tag butterflies, they got to plant seeds, they got to paint kindness rocks. There was six or seven different events that the kids got to participate in, so thank you again for providing that proclamation for there. I also want to remind everybody that we have a bike rodeo, our inaugural bike rodeo, coming up on May the 3rd at Spanish River Athletic Complex, and you can go to myboca.us to check it out, but some of the highlights include free bike helmets, bike inspections, bicycle safety education, skill-building activities, and a trail ride if you wanted to participate in that. Pre-registration is required, space is limited, and you need to bring your own bike. There will be some limited bikes available to borrow from Jack the Bike Man, so please check that out and get your child registered for that. And also, just wanted to remind everybody to, because I didn't remind everybody yesterday, to get the Circuit App and make sure you start riding Boca Connect, and that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
No report, thank you.
Thank you. I'll be brief. First, I want to start with a recognition of someone who served the city for many years in many capacities and mourn his passing. The late fire chief of both Boca Raton and Delray Beach, Kerry Cohen, passed several weeks ago. As we mourn with his family, he'll be recognizing him in his service later this week, and we'll have many city representatives there, we wanted to thank Chief Cohen for his service. He was a Boca pioneer here for more than 60 years, started in our fire department in the 60s, became chief, served multiple stints in Delray Beach, and was always on our planning and zoning board for more than a dozen years, where he always offered insightful commentary and insightful questions that I think made projects better. We joined his family in mourning his passing. In happier news, we have a whole variety of positive events for our community. Friday, we're celebrating Arbor Day. We'll have a volunteer tree planting as we go on our ambitious goal of planting thousands of trees, including providing more tree giveaways for residents, and under Mr. Brown's leadership and his goal, trying to find ways for people to be planting trees more along the sidewalks to really create shaded areas. We have a mayor's chess challenge this Saturday at Boca Downtown Library. I am prepared to lose to anyone who wants to play me, as I often do, hopefully this year it's not against a blindfolded opponent, as was the case. And May 7th and 8th, and more details will be finalized as we finalize our strategic planning session, will be our upcoming meetings, and then we'll have a regular main meeting, and a whole range of centennial events, which you can find out at Boca100.com, with more exciting news consistently being announced. If there's no further business to come before us, we are adjourned at 8:50. Thank you, and good evening.